Okay, we're going to start it up. Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. Hope we all have a good 2023. This is the January 12th, 2023 Town Official Planning Board meeting, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick announcements and reminders. Everyone, please silence your cell phones so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Anyone who's speaking tonight, please speak into the microphone clearly so that everyone at home and in the room can hear. I'd like to welcome Kevin O'Connell to the board. He's just been appointed as a new alternate member, so welcome, Kevin.
Welcome.
Good to have you. And a not-so-rare occasion, but it's good when it happens, is we will have all seven voting members here tonight. Felix told me that he'll be just a couple of minutes late, so we will have a full, not only a quorum, but a full amount of planning those members. So, let's start up. The first item that we're going to deal with, let's see. Ah, okay, we're going to start with approval of minutes. And the board is going to adopt and approve, hopefully, the November 10th, 2022 Planning Board meeting minutes. Some non-substantive comments were provided to the planning office. Does anyone have any other comments or corrections on the minutes?
No.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to adopt and accept the minutes of the November 10th, 2022 Planning Board meeting?
So moved.
Jody moves, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, the minute. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, that is adopted. Okay, so the first actual agenda item is going to be a request for extension of approval. This is Herring Holdings LLC Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Boards to review letter submitted by the applicant's representative on December 22, 2022, and to consider an extension of the resolution of final approval adopted on February 10th, 2022, and due to expire on February 10th, 2023. So, if the applicant is available, please come up and just give us a brief description of why that request is necessary.
Well, actually, we are happy to report that things are coming together very quickly, even this evening. There has been some type of maybe lack of communication. As this board knows, there were two pieces of coordination with the neighbors, the O'Malleys, that had to occur. One was an agreement to allow us to monitor their well and their foundation during rock removal operations, and one was the establishment of an easement. Both of those documents have been signed by both parties. What we fail to have, and what we've been trying to secure since last May, is the TP-154 form, did I say that? 584 form, that would allow us to file that and satisfy the conditions of the resolution to file that. I've spoken with the O'Malleys prior to the meeting. They said they are willing to sign that, so we've given them a copy of that, and I told them that they can drop that at our office. So, we're hoping to submit, literally, as soon as that document is signed for the chairman's signature. But, well, for a final coordination review and then submit the chairman's signature. But we do have one question relative to the agreement, the first condition of the resolution.
There's two agreements, there's two separate ones.
I'll let you address it.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Karen Hagstrom, attorney for the applicant, I'm filling in for Mr. Steiner this evening. So, there is a well-testing agreement and a rock-removal agreement, and I see that the number one on the resolution of final approval asked for proof of recording, but those documents are private agreements, so they shouldn't have to be recorded. So, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention with the hope that that can be changed. And Mr. Pagie's correct, when we really delve deep into the file, it looks like the TP-584, I think the O'Malleys may have signed it with their attorney, but we've been trying to get it from his attorney to no avail since May, from their attorney, rather, since May of 2022. So, Mr. Pagie gave them another original, actually, my client's here as well, and they signed another original, so we're hopeful that they will get that back to us in short order. Thank you.
So, if we could maybe get some resolution, maybe some direction from Dominic, whether it's appropriate not to file, as Karen is suggesting, that the private agreement for monitoring the well and monitoring the foundation.
Do you remember what number or condition that was?
It was the number one. So, and unfortunately, this all predates Dominic's, so we're probably hitting him upside the head nice and cold here.
All right, well, yeah, we won't put Dominic on the spot, but certainly if you do have any thoughts on that, but also if you have any other thoughts on the extension in general, any legal questions or comments that you might have on any of that would be helpful.
Well, in connection with the, there's agreements for the adjacent property well and the foundation monitoring, and you're absolutely correct. The resolution does say that the agreements have to be dated and recorded, and then proof of recording provided to the town. And I understand the comment that it's a private agreement between two private parties, but I believe that the purpose of recording those documents is so that they are in the chain of title and to make sure that those protections are in place and even with subsequent owners. So, for instance, if Herring Holdings was to sell the property to someone else, then that agreement would be, or the sale would be subject to that agreement. I think that was the original intent of recording those documents, to make sure that, you know, to put the world on notice that these things are out there, because there could be a transfer that happens at any stage, and a new buyer could say, "Well, that agreement wasn't with me, and so I don't have to abide by that agreement." So, that, I think, is the rationale for that, you know, but if you...
And I think the town's in possession of the originals of those documents, is my understanding. So, if they have to be recorded, we're going to have to go a step backwards, right, and get those back from the town. And have them recorded.
Yeah, I wouldn't have them, and, I mean, I only receive things electronically, so I wouldn't have the originals.
Okay, I don't have the originals of those, so I don't know. You don't have the originals?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So, it looks like you'll have to get them read on anyway.
We're going to have to recirculate those as well, then, if you're requiring that they be recorded.
Well, I'm just explaining the rationale.
I understand.
It's not my requirement, it's the planning board, but I, there certainly is a rationale for recording them. Whether or not the board wants to amend that provision is up to the board.
I just thought it was a private agree, I mean, what we're saying is it's a private agreement between the O'Malleys and the Harrings that doesn't have to do with any future owner of either property, that this is something that they have agreed to among themselves for the Harrings' particular project and for their particular property. It's not extending to other owners. That's why we, on the face of it, really felt it should not be recorded. It's a private agreement between two private parties.
If, I mean, what I would suggest is that if you could perhaps explain that in detail in writing.
Absolutely.
And I think that way the board, rather than having to respond to it off the cuff, could consider that in proper context, and that could be a separate item from the extension, you know, because that would essentially be a fairly minor amendment to the conditions of the approval, but it should be considered in its proper context. And it certainly, I don't think, needs to be decided tonight.
No, it does not. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, since we noticed that. I think putting it in writing is a good idea, and we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds like a good solution.
Thank you.
So, if I could indulge, I have two other small items just in the resolution. Again, we've been attempting to pull this together. Two other requirements are to demonstrate speedies coverage for the construction stormwater permit, and we have submitted the MS4 acceptance form back with the preliminary approval back in January of '22, a year ago, and we need that document back from the town, signed, to gain coverage. So, either, if we can, and I know all this occurred during a transfer of attorneys, so I think some of the things may be, I don't know if we have to resubmit it again to make that happen or what's going to happen, but I was hoping to actually get this submission to you within the next week, and I was going to ask if that consideration could be made to, rather than making that a condition for the signature on the plan, to make that a condition of obtaining a building permit. So, we can't actually start construction before we have actual coverage, because the SWIP's been accepted, it's been acknowledged. We just don't have that form from the town, and...
So, my understanding is that it's the supervisor who signs those, the final SWIP sign-off documents, right?
That is correct, and actually Pete Satoro was handling that at the time, so I don't really know where it lies right now. That actually goes to the supervisor to sign, so I'm not even part of the...
And we actually have a similar situation with the stormwater maintenance agreement that was submitted, actually, in December of '21, and I believe it's exactly what the town's looking for, but we haven't gotten anything back on that as well. We need to, we need that signed so we can file that, because one of the resolution requirements is documenting that that's been executed and filed. So, again, my request would be, in order to facilitate us getting the plan signed to allow these guys to move forward, to make those conditions of building permit, because there's nothing really that would be impacted prior to building permit by those two items. There's no need for coverage until building starts. There's no need for a stormwater maintenance agreement till the project's actually completed, so...
Well, I know those are not things we normally would do.
That's correct.
You know, certainly, John, get your input on that, but I think having the transition from previous engineer and attorney for different reasons seems like something that could happen pretty quickly if the red...
Yeah, I was going to suggest the documents that were sent, you know, a year ago, more than a year ago. If you could just send those to me, I can probably get them turned around, you know, right away.
That's the better solution. If that's something that we can do, we can get them to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
So...
Just CC me on the email, will you?
Okay.
Please.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so let's get back to the extension itself, because it does sound like, you know, to be on the safe side, you might need it, and it certainly doesn't hurt to do it, because you're here tonight. Are there any other questions or issues that planning board members might have? And also, I was going to, before we do that, I was just going to ask, I don't think there's any set amount of time in state laws or the town code for amount of extension, but is a six-month extension, hopefully, a good window for you?
I would say absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. That's my reading of it as well. There is a provision in the town code, it's 15097-F, that deals with the lapsing of approvals and what happens in the scenario if an approval actually lapses, in which case the planning board has to refer the matter to the town board for the town board's input on basically a re-granting of approval. This particular approval was granted in February of 2022, so it doesn't even expire this month, it expires next month. And so certainly, and the request for the extension was made in December. It's certainly a timely request and has not expired.
Okay, good. So, any questions or comments from board members?
Are there any other items, other than the ones that have already been discussed, that are pending here?
Not for you guys, I've already hit Debbie out in the hall and...
We're talking about it.
Thank you.
I'd rather have them open.
Yeah, much appreciated, thank you.
All right, everyone else okay? All right, is there a motion to approve the request by Herring Holdings LLC for a six-month extension of the resolution of final approval, extending set approval for final site development plan and special use permit to August 10th, 2023? So moved. Anthony moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, we are all here, so that's a vote of seven to zero. Welcome, Felix. Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much. It's good to see you all. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. The next item on the agenda is SDL Katz LLC Proposed Site Development Plan, Board to Review Informal Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on December 28th, 2022, and the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after the discussion. Welcome, Mr. O'Rourke.
Good evening and Happy New Year to all.
Good to...
Thank you for this opportunity to have this informal discussion. I think it would be very fruitful and worthwhile for all of us. My name is Richard O'Rourke, I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean, serving as counsel for Leighton Properties. Here tonight with me is Mr. Scott Leighton, who's here, along with Ron Cypress from Leighton Properties, and our consulting engineer is Patrick O'Leary from VHB Engineering. As you know, this is a property, the Katz property, is located at 4-23 Katz Place and on Old Glenham Road, and it's in the RMF 5 zoning district. We have what we believe to be a very worthwhile application of superior quality, and the purpose of this evening is to discuss just that, because there are some issues that we would like to discuss, perhaps get some informal feedback, which would help us make sure that we come forth with a project that is consistent with the excellence of the Leighton Properties' reputation. So, with that, what I would like to do is turn it over to Mr. O'Leary, and like me, he's got an O apostrophe, so I'm very partial towards Mr. O'Leary, but I'm sure he's going to give you a very nice presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Mr. Katz is my neighbor, and I believe that I can be completely impartial during the review, so I would like to stay if I can.
All right, well, thank you for that disclosure, and let's proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Katz is here, by the way.
Yes.
Forgive me for not introducing...
Good evening, this is Chairman and Planning Board Members. Happy New Year to you all, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Patrick O'Leary, I'm a senior principal with VHB, I'm a registered professional engineer here in the state of New York, and would like to go over a proposed site plan for the site. We're in the conceptual planning stages for the site. We're not formally submitting a site plan application at this time. We're conceptually planning the site, and one of the things we like to do is reach out to the community for input prior to initiating design on the site. You live here in the community, you know what you'd like to see in the community, you know what's transpired in the past and what you'd like to see in the future, and it's important for us to get a sense of what the community may like to see on the site as well. If the secretary could possibly move...
You can go ahead and use the touchpad.
Okay.
Should be able to, like, use that slide bar on the side.
Yeah, I have it, just...
Yep, there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where could... These are the only two of the site plans, aren't there?
That's what was submitted on the USB.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if you'd bear with me one moment, I do have a colored board outside that I could use to demonstrate the site plan. All right, is anyone else going to speak? And maybe we could hear from others while you're...
Scott, would you like to speak while I get the board? So, introduce Leighton Properties, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
George said there was some more information on the USB, but we'll show you the...
I'm going to take a look while you look.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm Scott Leighton from Leighton Properties. Good evening, thanks for hearing us. As you know, the, we're here to discuss the Katz property and the development in accordance with the current zoning. No problem. I think it's best for Pat, you to start with the...
I think you just needed to close that particular one, because you sent me separate files for everything. Go into discussion at the top? That's everything that gave me.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay, well, we'll, after, you know, Pat talks, the, it'll become a little bit more evident. There are really two parcels, it's connected, it's one piece of property, but it's a horseshoe, and our purpose, we believe, is to deliver excellence. And with that, we want to leave the westerly portion of the property, of the horseshoe, in its natural state as pure open space, and we think that's smart development, I like it. As much as I'm a developer, I like to see a lot of open space, and so by putting the property, the apartments on the easterly portion, we're allowed to obviously then keep all the open space on the, about seven acres or seven and a half acres of the 15-acre site. There was a couple of slides which will show you of just generally the makeup of what the units and the apartments makeup are, which were proposing, and again, Pat will show you, basically six buildings. Three of them would be four-unit buildings, when I say four units, four units per floor on three floors, so 12 units in one building of that type, so we'd have three of those type of buildings. And then we'd have three buildings with eight units a floor, which would be 24 units, and there would be three of those buildings, and we'd build a small clubhouse. We believe that we're going to be marketing to young professionals that are, I think, high earners, that are looking for modern conveniences of the apartments that we'll be building. There would be nine-foot ceilings, all high-end appliances, large windows, lots of light and air, et cetera. It's a small property, so the clubhouse will not be grand. It'll, again, have enough amenities that our tenants will be looking for, a meeting place, gym, a little bit of a place to socialize, and probably some outdoor amenities, but not like a swimming pool, we don't have enough space for that. But we believe, again, there's a missing market here in Fischville that we could both attract and retain people that, as I said, are looking for this high-end, more modern, probably, again, as sustainable as we can. We'd probably look at an all-electric facilities here, electric heat, electric air conditioning, obviously, and probably electric cooking, again, attracting this clientele. That's, again, the high in nature and quality is, again, it's hard, as a developer, it seems, you know, it's easy for people of my stature to say that, but I mean it, and can show you some examples of what we've been building, and I would be very proud to be able to be part of the community. I think Pat can now show you a little bit more, and I'm here to answer any questions, obviously.
Thank you.
Up on the screen right now, to orient the board members, is the existing conditions survey for the site. The site is bounded to the north by Route 52. On the southerly side, and Old Glenham continues down off the page there, to the piece on the left, you have Old Glenham Road. The site is partially developed. As we're looking at these plans, the right-hand side of it, it's kind of shaped like a horseshoe, is partially developed with commercial buildings, some residential buildings. Left-hand side of the site is completely undeveloped. The left-hand side of the site is wooded, forested. There's a number of ledge outcroppings through there, a little bit of topographic relief, a wetland over to the westerly side of it. Very nice piece of land, and what we did is we walked through the land and tried to develop a plan that would be sensitive to the natural character of the area there. First slide here, what we're showing is the overall parcel of land. You can see to the north toward Route 52, this is a 20-acre parcel. The five acres along Route 22 is zoned commercial, this area up here, and will not be part of the development. It will be subdivided off and used for other purposes in the future. Commercial development, I would anticipate, since that's what it is zoned for. Leaves about 15 acres down here in the horseshoe configuration. And as we looked at this, the left-hand side of the site has a number of interesting natural features. The RMF zone does require 50% of open space. There are a number of unique and natural features and ecologies out there, be it the wetlands themselves, the upper highlands around the wetlands, the stone outcroppings. And it was our perception, as we are looking at the site, that it would truly make sense to leave that as open space in its natural state. There's a number of nice habitats for wildlife out there, and we don't see any reason to, I don't know what happened.
I'm trying to get it on the...
Oh, I wasn't touching it, and I saw it change, and I was like, wow, that's magic. So, we focused the development on what I'm going to call the right-hand side of the site, or the seven, seven and a half acres to the right-hand side of the site. I'm actually going to change slides.
You can go ahead.
Okay.
It's just, the drawings are very detailed, so it takes a while for them to load.
Understood, thank you. And the next slide I bring up here is just a more detailed...
Sometimes hard copies are a lot easier.
Sometimes, yes, they are, I agree with you. I agree with you, I agree, Mr. Chairman. And in the future, what I'll do is I'll find a way to reduce the file size so that it's quicker to flip-
It's also very old laptop, so don't blame yourself.
Thank you. So what this is, is a close-up of the area that we are suggesting the development of, because it's just easier to see. As you can see up here, there's approximately a 200-foot depth strip. You can just see Route 52 along here, that will not be part of the project. Within the seven acres that's located on this side of the property, what we're proposing to do is construct six multifamily residential units. One, two, three, four, five, six, and an associated clubhouse here. There would be one access point proposed off of Old Glenham Road in this location down here. It could easily be changed to two access points in and out from a fire and safety standpoint. And that would be something we'd have to work with DPW, obviously, the board, and we're perfectly happy to meet your expectations on that. Based on the zoning for the RMF 5, we are allowed up to 180 bedroom units. What that constitutes for us would be approximately 72 two-bedrooms and 36 one-bedroom units totaling 108 units for the site. We divided these units into two types of buildings. You can see in this area here, the smaller buildings, those are three-story, 12-unit buildings with four units per floor. And then the three larger buildings over here are 24 units, eight units per floor. If you take the average of those two buildings, you come up with an average of six on the first floor, which is consistent with what you recommend in the zoning code. Zoning code allows the planning board to allow up to eight units on the ground floor, calls for four units, but allows the planning board the ability to waive that and provide up to eight units on the ground floor. But the average number of units on the ground floor for the buildings cannot exceed six, which is what we're demonstrating here. In addition, these buildings are, and we'll show you some elevations of them, we're proposing three-story buildings in this area. And one of the benefits to the three-story buildings as opposed to the two and a half stories that are allowed per your zoning code is that it allows the development to be consolidated in this area, create a sense of community within the development itself here. It also helps to minimize scarring the land. You have a beautiful resource on the other side, as opposed to adding more buildings to it by decreasing the number of floors and the number of units per the first floor. By consolidating it into this development and using the three larger buildings, we're able to leave seven to eight acres in a perfectly natural state untouched, and then limit the development to the right-hand side of the site. And as you look around the development itself, you can see there's already residential development immediately in the area. And on the backside of the site, it's proposed for commercial development. So it seems to be a very good transition in our mind for this area right now. The site plan here is showing about 170 parking spots for the 108 units, which is a little below what is required by your code. Once again, we have room to meet the standard of your code for parking purposes, but based on past experience and working on multifamily housing, we feel about 1.7 parking spots per unit would be appropriate here. We do have land, lots of green space out there to continue paving and parking, but our goal is to minimize disturbance to the area, minimize impervious, and minimize parking spaces from the standpoint, why construct parking spaces if they're not going to be used and disturb land. We've looked at stormwater management on the site. We believe we can certainly meet all the EC and local regulations from a stormwater management. This is very conceptual in nature, so we're not demonstrating things, for example, the rain gardens that would be incorporated in the plan. Interior to these parking areas, for example, and those landscaped areas, we'd have rain gardens for water quality to improve overall stormwater management, water quality. It's a detailed design that we pursue at a later date. Tonight, we're looking to get a little bit of input on the massing that's associated with this, your thoughts on the potential for waivers associated with the site. We would be looking for potentially a dimensional waiver for this building up here as well from a setback criteria, once the five-acre lot is subdivided. So we're looking at waivers for three-story versus two and a half. We'd be looking for a waiver regarding the number of units on the first floor, allowing, as you identified in your code, an average of six, maximum of eight, as well as potentially parking. Easy to meet the parking requirement, but we want to seek some input from you on if you think it's more important to meet the 2.0 parking requirement, or if it's more important to actually meet the needs of a development of this nature. And then possibly reserve areas for future parking if somebody thinks areas should be reserved in the future in case it is necessary, but leave that space green. We think it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We understand you're in the process of reviewing and rewriting your plan to the best of our knowledge today. This is consistent with it. It's consistent with the zoning. We're not looking for any variance relief. We believe the plan as shown would be zoning compliant with the waivers I mentioned. Part of your zoning regulations with respect to the waivers specifically state that the waivers are contingent upon excellence in design. It is our goal here from an environmental standpoint to be as sensitive as possible to the land that surrounds the area as well as the neighborhoods that are there. We're not looking to create a development that sprawls over 15 acres. We're trying to consolidate it, save the natural resources here, do minimal earthwork, and work with the topography as we place these buildings here. And at the same token, from a stormwater management standpoint, manage the water in such a way that it will not be detrimental to any resource. We'll infiltrate, recharge groundwater wherever possible to the maximum extent possible, and of course, maintain any natural waterway features or drainage features associated with it. Traffic for this site, with development of this size, generally speaking, would generate about 30 trips in the peak hour. You know, AM peak, you may have 20 coming out, 10 going in. PM peak would be just about the opposite, maybe 35. I haven't quite looked for this site to get that exact number. Generally speaking, that equates to about one vehicle every two minutes that would be entering Old Glenham Road. We don't see that, you know, we understand it is more traffic. We don't think it's a significant amount of traffic that's being generated by the project, nor do we believe it would have any adverse impact on Old Glenham Road. There's more than adequate site distance at the location we're showing the curb cut. If it's changed to two curb cuts from a fire safety access, still there would be more than adequate site distance there. Of course, this landscaping plan is not fully developed. We're just showing some trees there to demonstrate areas where landscape rain gardens would be on the site. Once we move forward with a completed application, of course, you'll have a full comprehensive landscape plan. All of our landscape plans consistently, we do not use any invasive species when we're landscaping whatsoever. They're all native species, and I think you'd be very impressed overall with the ultimate aesthetic quality of the landscaping we provide. Finally, just to give you a sense of- the scale, type and scale of buildings we're proposing on the site. This slide was up originally. If I can get it back up here. This type of architecture, your code requires excellence in design for any waiver to be granted. And certainly, it's our intent, both from a landscaping perspective, an overall aesthetic perspective, working this to fit into the neighborhood and be consistent with the neighborhood. Our goal is to create architecture that will meet those needs and is consistent with the neighborhood. This is just a conceptual image that we have today, not fully developed, it's not fully developed with materials, colors, or otherwise, but we just want to bring to your attention some of the things we're trying to do with the buildings themselves. First of all, we're creating gabled roof as opposed to flat roofs, roof, mansard roofs, or any other type of feature parapet, flat roofs. We're constructing full gables here. As you look across the buildings themselves, you can see there's a great deal of architectural relief. This is not some brick building, 100 feet long, solid brick. You can see there's a great deal of architectural relief as you move from right to left on these buildings. It consistently throughout changes pattern, moving forward and backward to create a sense of depth. The entrances have their own porticoes associated with them. You can see the balconies outside for each apartment there. This is not one of the buildings themselves because it's a little bit larger, just a little bit larger, but this represents eight units on the first floor. I think we lost the top of this building. So, but that gives you a general sense from an architectural standpoint what the goals are here. Once again, materials, the finestration associated with the buildings themselves, and the architectural relief of the facades, you know, is something we can work with, with the planning board, and we're happy to work collaboratively with the board and the staff to make this project meet the demands of the community and be something both the community can be proud of as well as Laighton Properties themselves. Our goal tonight is to solicit input from you and get your thoughts, be it on the land use itself, massing, waivers, things of that nature, so that we can take that back, digest it, and take it into consideration as we start moving forward with any design elements on the building. With that, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything else you'd like to add before turning it back?
By my, as Pat indicated, what we're, first of all, we thank you again for allowing us to have this discussion, because as you can tell, because of the size of the property and preliminarily, our plan is to try to cluster and preserve as much as we can of that other section. And that's a, as a design and engineering question that we'd like to have some feedback, to see what your thoughts are before we go into the detail that's necessary to complete an application. So we're not gonna hold you to it, but we're just trying to get a sense of your feelings about that and whether it's the right direction to go. That's number one. Number two, obviously, the intention as well, as Pat said so clearly, is to mask that green area, and we want to, we'll have area for, if necessary, additional parking, but we would prefer not to do that because we think it'll take away from the design. We can landbank it, we could set it aside, show it to you that we could do it at a later point in time if necessary, but, you know, that's one of the preliminary questions we have for you, so.
All right.
Yeah, we're here, whatever questions you have, criticisms, compliments, whatever.
Yeah, so Jody, you would be a good person to start off, so go ahead.
Yes. So I have a lot of questions, actually. Number one, you're talking about an area that you're going to keep green. I understand that's the western side of the horseshoe, as you're saying?
Yes, yes.
You walked that property, correct?
Yes, we have.
That property is wet, correct? It's wet, and there's a lot of rock, isn't there?
There's ledge.
So I would think that that, I just think that that would be a very difficult parcel to develop, because I've been there, I know, Mr. Katz knows me for a long time. The property is lovely, by the way. But it would be difficult, I think, to develop that side, so I get it. But I'm not necessarily feeling like maybe it's because you want to keep it green. That side would be harder to develop. But on the other side, is that gonna be families? I heard you say two-bedroom and one-bedroom, but would there be families with kids, or is it just?
Well, that's a difficult question to answer in terms of, if it's, if they're one-bedrooms and they're high-end apartments, I doubt very seriously you're going to have, quote, "a family." And the max of the size, if I'm not mistaken, is two bedrooms.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're not looking, this is not necessarily a family, shall we say, targeted marketing at all. To the contrary, what we're seeing and what we believe to be the market trends, and I think we've talked about pattern for progress and all the longitudinal and, shall we say, the trends demographically that are occurring. This is the kind of market that this development would place to that market, which is different from your traditional family apartment with three bedrooms, four bedrooms, that type of thing. That's not, that's not our target market at all.
Okay, because right now Beacon and Fishkill are hot markets, we all know that. Everybody wants to move to Beacon, everybody wants to move to Glenham. Glenham School is already at max capacity. As a matter of fact, there are children who get bussed to the other side of Beacon because that school is at max capacity. It cannot take any more children. So that would be a consideration going forward. Where, who's going, how are these kids, if they're in yet?
We understand that, and this property is zoned for residential development.
Understood.
And so it's gonna get developed residentially. So the issue then becomes, what, you know, what is an appropriate development? What's the environmental carrying capacity of the land? You pointed out some, what could be some environmental constraints, but I think the important thing here is that the project as envisioned is not something that is going to necessarily attract large families, to the contrary, to the contrary.
But we don't know what they're gonna attract, we don't know.
We don't, we-
Statistically, when we make the-
Statistically, there are reports, like there's a Rutgers report that is, will be submitting when we do a formal application with a secret application.
Correct.
And there are very few, I mean, the statistics are, there are very few families in two bedrooms, very few kids. I'm not gonna give you the number, but it's minimal. It's surprisingly minimal. And the statistics, because again, I've got lots of engineers on different projects, and it's actually less than usually the Rutgers reports that, you know, have been materialized. And we're not gonna be marketing to that. That's, these are, this, again, it's not gonna have a pool, that's not the many, it's really gonna be designated, you know, marketed to the young professionals, the high earners. Rents are gonna be, you know, decently high here, we're hoping, and so that's who we're gonna hit the market to.
So at any rate, that will inevitably be part of the environmental review as we go through the process.
I guess the terminology used to be INCS, double income, no kids.
Now, when-
What is the square footage of this one-bedroom and two-bedroom?
What's the-
Living area, living area, what would be the-
What's the living area?
Square footage.
A square footage, again, we haven't designed it. And again, even the design's there, but a typical two-bedroom is 1,100 square feet, maybe, you know, 1,000 square feet, and a one-bedroom is 750 to 800 square feet, somewhere in that range.
Jody, do you have more comments? Yeah, go ahead.
When I was looking at the drawings, I couldn't 100% ascertain. The building is back at the, is that 27 feet roughly? building is back at the, is that twenty-seven feet roughly? There was, on one of the, not that drawing, on one of the drawings, it showed what appeared to be the property line and the building. Is that twenty-seven feet?
If I may digress, I can go back to your first question slash comment regarding the existing conditions, since this slide is up, and then I'll move to your next.
Okay, it's kind of hard for me to hear you.
I apologize.
That's okay, it's me, I have hearing problems.
I'll answer your sec, the following question in a minute. Since I have this slide up, I can address your first question regarding the existing conditions and the natural features on the site.
On, on the other side?
Yeah, on the other side, on the left-hand side, in this area over here. Actually, this, this area is truly suitable for development. You, you are absolutely correct, there is a wet area over here. We have not performed a wetland delineation, so this is approximate at this time from the survey and having walked the site, but generally speaking, somewhere around this line here, coming down through here, that's the wet area that you're referring to, and obviously, that's not suitable for development, nor would we go near that area. It's a very nice wetland, and we do everything, if we were developing in that area, we'd do everything we could to protect it. This area over here is particularly well-suited, the topography flattens out in this area, it's a large expanse, but it's also a very nice upland feature for the wetland. There are two upland features over there, you have this area here, grazing meadow, upland feature, and then you have, in this immediate area, ledge out, proppings for the upland area, and on the backside over here, more ledge. And so, it is a very nice piece of property over there, certainly suitable for development. We, in looking at it, you know, it's in its natural state right now, and it doesn't make any sense, since the right-hand side of this property is already developed, has already been disturbed, many of, you know, the forestation has been removed from the site. It simply made much more sense to consolidate the development over here on this side than it did on the other side because of its natural characteristics, but it's certainly suitable for development from that standpoint. Very quickly, on the schoolchildren, as part of any seeker analysis, we would be submitting an EAF, be it an expanded EAF, or whatever additional documentation would be necessary. I would anticipate that a component of that would be a fiscal impact analysis, which will demonstrate the tax revenues generated versus the number of schoolchildren, cost of schoolchildren, cost of municipal services, fire, police, things of that nature. And that's outlined in a very detailed report as part of the overall seeker package. We have not gone down that road at this point, because we're in preliminary design, conceptually to speak with you, but we certainly appreciate the comment on the schoolchildren, and when we move forward with that, we'll pay particular attention to the fiscal and economic report from that standpoint. And then, your third question was regarding the setback, if you can bear with me as I try to get to that slide. Getting faster. Practice makes perfect. I could blame the computer and say, "I'm not slow, it's the computer," but I don't think that would be fair to the computer. I think it's this area over here that you're talking about?
No.
No?
The first building, coming off of Old Glenham Road, on the left.
This one here?
That one.
Yes, we're showing the setback, per the zoning requirement, here is twenty-five feet, we're showing twenty-seven foot setback for.
So, and I understand this is still preliminary?
Absolutely.
What barrier are you going to have? Because I understand what you're saying, you're putting in three-story buildings. However, the area doesn't, there are no real three-story buildings, and so, I'm, I'm trying to see how there would be a smooth transition, because the person on the third floor, if they have a balcony, would be able to see clear over the houses that are there now.
One of the things relative to the topography, it's really important to work a site plan and the architecture relative to the topography on the site. So, one of the goals here for the two buildings that you're seeing over here, as opposed to setting those right on top of the ground, per se, if you were standing there, we would actually depress those buildings. So, as viewed from the neighborhood over here, you would actually be looking at a two-story building, which would be very consistent with what's constructed over here. The first story would be recessed below, so that, as you looked at it from this area over here, you'd be looking up to it, it would appear to you as a two-story building, right? Because you'd be looking uphill, there would be a cut on the other side of the hill, the building would be recessed down, yes.
Are you, are you creating, how you're saying it, are you digging down, almost creating a berm to the adjacent property?
Correct, the berm is, the berm is natural in itself, right? Because the topography here, you know, you have a high point, a ridge line, I'm sorry, I'm so bad, but there's a ridge line right along here, so if you come to this side of the ridge line over here, where the buildings are, and you depress that down eight to ten feet, what you're doing is the houses that are over here in this area, is they look up to the ridge line, what you're going to see effectively is a two-story building, right? When you're on, in here internally to the site, looking at it, you're going to see a full three-story building. On the backside of these buildings here, what you're going to have is maybe an eight, ten-foot area way, you know, for fire safety, health purposes, and some form of retaining wall or natural structure that cuts off that side of the hillside. Does that?
Yeah, well.
Help create the picture.
You don't want to get too crazy, I mean, I know, you're going to dig down, they're going to, like, mechanical's going to be down below, or is it going to be on a slab?
When you're referring to mechanicals, I assume you're talking about the HVAC units?
Yeah, for HVACs and hot water.
Yeah, typically, the, the HVAC units for this would be located on the side, probably four or five feet off the building, so they would not be visible to any of the neighbors. We do our best to screen shield those. These are on slab, there's no basement, no parking underneath, so they're slab-on-grade with, you know, four-foot frost walls.
And when you're speaking of the actual, I actually liked the view of the one went out the roof on it.
We're here to work with you.
It's three stories livable, but you're also going to now add another half a story of roof line.
Correct.
So you are, you are bringing something that's foreboding to the sightline of the property.
But if you, if you were building a colonial there on top.
I understand what you're trying to do, I mean, it's preliminary, I'm not.
Right, I'm just suggesting, if you were building a colonial at that same location and putting it on the hilltop, as you viewed it from the other properties, you would still see the two-story stories, and then you'd see the gable roof. And we're happy to work with you on roof lines, right? They don't have to be full gables, we can, you know, manage, move to hip roofs, we could go to mansard-type roofs, we could go to flat roofs with parapets like the, the photo you saw there. We, you know, want to work and collaborate with the community and work on design excellence here, from that standpoint. So I, I know we're trying to get as much input as possible, but I think we may be getting into a little bit too much detail in this kind of discussion, and we do need to move along a little bit more quickly, because we have a very long agenda. But, Jody, let me go back to you, I know you might have some more.
I have only one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
There's already enough traffic on Old Glenham Road, and I live on Old Glenham Road. I, I told, everybody knows where I live. It's going to be a hard sell to not have a lot of people upset. Why aren't you going out onto fifty-two? That's a main thoroughfare. Why not put the driveway out to fifty-two and leave Old Glenham Road alone, versus having all that added traffic on Old Glenham Road? And Old Glenham Road is not the safest of roads. In the past couple of years, there's been a couple of accidents, there was an accident less than probably ten days ago. So, I'm just not sure why you're coming onto Old Glenham Road instead of going out onto fifty-two.
Certainly take a look at that.
I'm just, it's just a suggestion.
That's a wonderful comment, and that's exactly the reason why we're here this evening. You live on that road, and you have knowledge. I didn't have knowledge of the accident a few weeks ago, nor an accident preceding that. So that's the type of comment that we're going to go back and work collectively as a group, to see what makes the best sense, you know, as we put the site plan together, as we view the road, standing out there, I've been involved with about thirty million square feet of development at this point, and standing on the road for, during the peak traffic periods and watching traffic on it, there are parts of the roadway which I don't think are suitable for curb cuts, there's very limited sightline distance, there's topography.
You're correct.
And so, we actually looked for a specific area with minimal topography, appropriate sightline distances, but we hadn't considered your comment here, so we certainly appreciate that, and we'll take that into consideration as we move forward, all your comments, actually.
For what it's worth, I like the, the buildings, the way they look with the roofing, they're very nice-looking buildings, they are, they look nice, what I saw.
How far is it from the back of the houses to fifty-two, or fifty-two?
It's roughly, see this blue line right here? This is the area that is anticipated to be subdivided off, that is the commercial area. And roughly speaking, it's about two hundred feet in depth, you know, so from fifty-two, the property itself is about two hundred feet in depth, and I think there's about thirty, thirty-five feet between the property line and the roadway proper, so, you know, somewhere in that area. So of course, from the drawings we've seen, there's, we really have no idea what the frontage on Route fifty-two looks like at this point, so we're, certainly would have to take a look at that. It's completely wooded on fifty, it's wooded, so, you know, and we're not proposing, this proposal is not addressing Route fifty-two, that parcel whatsoever, it's zone commercial for commercial uses, we're not involved with any potential development, and personally, I have no knowledge of any projects or otherwise pending for that, so it's in a natural state now.
But you would consider perhaps another access point through fifty-two to the back of the property?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we go with our suggestion, then yeah.
We're, we're going to take your comments back, and we're going to collaborate around a table and see what we can do to incorporate as much input from the community. So, I know that's not a yes to your question, because I don't have that answer today, we're here to seek input.
Yeah, so just, in the subdivision, we're, we don't own that property, we're not going to, as part of our purchase, own that property. So, Mr. Katz, we will, we'll retain that, and we'll talk to, as of now, and I understand the traffic, and it has to be studied, and it has to be approved, right now, we're on Old Glenham, and we'll, we'll look at that, we'll look at everything, we'll look at flat roofs, we'll look at the peak roofs, you know, again, so, at the end of the day, I know we'll all be happy, but at this point, I don't know about that.
One more question, out of the hundred and eight units, how many are the two-bedroom units?
I think we said about seventy-two or two bedrooms?
Because generally, two bedrooms tend to attract families, right?
No, no, again, if you look at the statistics, families are not into two bedrooms. And so, again, this is, this will be part of the secret, and part of the application, we'll study that, but, you know, I know people think, well, there, you know, lots of kids, there are very few kids that live in these, in these apartments, and we're not going to be marketing to that, it's going to be, as I said, this is going to be a little bit more modern, a little bit, you know, higher-end, not that kids aren't higher-end, but we're, we're going to be trying to get to the, the younger earners that, you know, want to be here.
Well, when you, when you define a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom unit, these days, in those kinds of units, you're seeing other types of rooms included, like, you know, a den, an office for home occupations, that type of thing. So, they actually might be a little bit bigger than what we used to know of as a one- or a two-bedroom unit, is that correct?
Well, the purposing of the property is a little different, there's always a how we look at this as a nook, or again, even when I do senior developments, we add areas where there's going to be home offices, so, in, in all this, there's going to be an area that will be set off for work-at-home possibility. So yes, it's, it's more repurposing and, and design than it is naturally square footage.
Excuse me, where would, where would the overflow parking be?
Fred, wait a minute, I think, I think, I think Mr. Rorke wanted to address something else first.
I was just going, there was a comment made about DINKs, dual income, no kids. Those of you that are married to professionals or non-professionals that, that work on computers, to be honest with you, a one-bedroom oftentimes is not sufficient for two people working, and the two-bedroom, that bedroom oftentimes gets converted into an office for one or both, so, I mean, that's the type of, this, the, the amenity package that's envisioned here is not a playground, it's not a pool. There's a target, I, I did a project recently in the town of Somers, Somers Crossing, where it's, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful development, and there's, the, the attraction there is for people that are downsizing or are looking for smaller units, not for people with families, so I just want to respond to that, just want to make that point. I guess, you know, thank you so much for your time, we're, we're just trying to get a sense of, are we on the right track here? Are we trying, we're, we're trying to, the property's going to get developed, it's zone RMF, residential multifamily, so, the, the, the key points to us is, one point is, the clustering as envisioned, as Pat has explained, there is developability on the other side, but we think that the cluster this way, leaving the open space, some of it is not environmentally sensitive land, we want to see if that, that conceptually is something that, are we on the right track? That's number one. Number two, insofar as the design, we're, we're meeting the intention of, of the code by what, what, what our design is, but we do, of course, need a waiver, which is obviously built into your code, and that waiver is to permit us to have three stories. Those are two fundamental elements that we'd like to get some feedback, some feel, are we headed in the wrong direction here? Are we headed in the right direction? Do we engage Pat to proceed to, you know, detailed engineering plans? And are we on the same track, or should we just go home, pack our bags, and do something else? That's what we're looking for. The property's going to, the property's going to end up getting developed, so, one way or the other.
Fred, go ahead, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just looking, because you, because you're asking for a waiver on the parking, a little bit.
Not, not really, I think the waiver, the zoning complaint.
Yeah.
In the event that we need to ask for a waiver, it would be on about thirty spots. The reason we're, thank you, sir. The reason we're suggesting the waiver is we don't believe those spots will be used, and we don't see any reason to destroy landscape or land.
No, I understand that.
And so what we would do is, we would be happy to put a reservation, be it up here, along this line here, to provide those thirty parking spots, or over here, it'd be our intent to put those reserved areas back by the commercial, if it was ever used, you don't need the parking out by Old Glenham and seeing from Old Glenham, you would put it back toward the commercial area. Hope that answers your question.
Well, I just thought you, I'd sound like you were going to subdivide the property.
Yes.
And, and I didn't know who's going to go over into the commercial property, which will not be yours.
No, it will not go into the commercial property, it would be right here in this area that would be reserved, we're only talking about thirty spots here, it's two-hundred-and-seventy by twenty feet, something like that, to get that, or we would do a double-loaded bay here to pick up those thirty spots, that would be fifteen, two bays of fifteen, so it'd be about a hundred feet in depth with a dead end.
Yeah, go ahead, Felix. I'll try to be quick, because we've taken a long time on this. What's the height of the buildings?
It's forty-five feet.
What?
Approximately thirty-five, thirty-six feet.
I thought I saw forty-five, forty-four, eight on one of them.
Sorry?
No waiver on height. I thought I saw forty-four feet, eight inches on one of the drawings. I mean, we can talk about that later, I, but.
So, so you're not looking for a waiver on the height, just the stories?
Correct. Correct.
And the other, other thing was, I, I brought it up, Jody, I, I, I understand it'll be subdivided, just I'd like to maybe have you guys think conceptually of a second access, just because when you have that many units, we'd like to kind of see that if possible, okay? And I think we can move on. But I do like the overall design, it looks nice. It looks nice, you know? And I think it'll be a nice use of the property. Only thing I'm worried about is the visual impact from the neighbors.
We obviously will be doing a sightline view shed analysis.
So, one thing about the dual-access possibility, Felix, is, we, we had our pre-application meeting with the applicants and talked about the possibility of, you know, an extra-wide boulevard type of an entrance, which would, you know, basically, I think, a number of the developments we've seen around the town have that kind of a setup, where you have, like, a median island between two fairly wide entrance roads, so that if one gets, you know, blocked for some reason, you've got the other one that can access the property. But the other possibility, since we're talking about access on Old Glenham, is if the, if that is where the access is settled on, there certainly could be a future through access, through the GB property up to Route fifty-two in the future, that could be thought about in conjunction with the approval of this development. So that, you know, once the GB business zone portion is developed, and who knows when that's going to be, there could be a connection and a possible through, you know, means of access through that property. It wouldn't be right, right in the beginning, but, but again, the third possibility is definitely, we would like to see that access looked at to be on Route fifty-two and see, see what would be involved with that. Right now, we just don't have enough details to even, you know, comment further on that. But I think it's, it's a good idea to look at, so. Anthony, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, they're on the right track with the clustering, but I think in terms of the portion of the site that they're trying to develop, it, it's a shoehorn job. You've got buildings up against the twenty-five-foot setback line, forty-four-foot, eight-inch-high buildings, about a hundred feet away from neighboring units. If I lived next to this, I'd be furious. And I do want to see a second access, but I think if anything, I, I would not support the third story. I'd support fewer units and less parking. I, I just, I, I think this is a start, but I don't want to go any deeper tonight, because there's really no more further details, but that's kind of where I stand on the matter.
Kevin, did you have any other thoughts or questions?
No, my only considerations were dual-access for emergency reasons, if for nothing else, or at least the back entrance. I don't really care where the main entrance is. And, you know, two bedrooms usually requires two parking spaces in my mind, so I don't know what the 1.7 is based on. And the third story's an issue, and if we ever open this for public comments, I think some of those folks will ask the same kinds of questions that have been asked here tonight.
Well, in a few minutes, we will open up for informal public comments and see if there is anyone here who wants to, to comment, but there'll be other opportunities throughout the process for public. In fact, one of the things I think we talked about at the pre-application meeting, and I, I would strongly suggest, if the applicant is willing and able to, even before bringing in the formal application to the town, is go out, set up an informal public meeting with the neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting. You know, maybe see if you can set it up at Glenham Elementary School or some other, some other local place where it could handle a fair number of people, and invite the, the people who live in that area to come, and you can tell them what your ideas are and get some more direct feedback from them. It's usually a good way, before you start getting into a formal process, to, you know, just see what people are thinking.
Just lastly, I mean, this, you know, as a, again, I don't live here, but I've been on the property many, many times. There are existing homes or structures on the property. And the, and Mr. Katz is here, and no disrespect, but this is going to be, again, architecturally and in every way, you know, a huge upgrade to what is there. So, people saying that, well, I don't want to look at potentially, you know, this new beautiful building that might be three stories compared to what's there. And again, I'm very proud of all the developments that we put forth. Architecturally, it looked beautiful. It's not viable for us to, other than moving to the other side and connecting, I cannot do it unless there is a, is three stories on this. So, I think there's a trade-off in everything. So, the shoehorning is, this is sufficient for a hundred and eight units on seven and a half acres. The, the property, I think, hides it well, based on, on the topography. But with not having three stories on this side, then we are obligated, or necessary now, excuse me, it's, it's a necessity for us to then move to the other part of the shoehorn, the other part of the horseshoe, shoehorn, horseshoe, so to the other side, which, again, I think is, is a mistake in regards to ecologically and, and, and proper design for development. I think that's it.
Any other questions?
No, I understand what you're saying. Architecturally, it is a beautiful, it's not, no, no doubt. It's just scaling it to what kind of is there and everything else. Sometimes it just kind of takes people back a little bit. Like, when I look at the front of the buildings, it's, it's kind of like, you know, that's why I said the roof line being really tall kind of makes it even look more, it's, it's, developing back in the sixties and seventies, everything was scaled a little smaller, the houses were whatever, and now, everything is larger. But, you know, I, I, like I said, I don't have no problem with the, the plan and what you're trying to do, so I just, yeah, I didn't want to get it taken the wrong way.
Yeah, I think personally, I'd have to be convinced about a waiver for the, the extra-half story on the buildings. I'd want to see some really super spectacular design that could address the increased, you know, half-story on a building that, you know, might include some variations in the roof lines and other, other ways that you can deal with minimizing the impact of heights of buildings. Because, again, I think we've heard, and we'll probably hear from the neighborhood too, that these buildings have the potential to be perceived as being higher and larger than other buildings in the neighborhood, and we want to find ways to minimize the impact of that through buffering, through screening, through, through really good building design, however large the buildings are and however many units there are going to be in them. So, the other thing to consider is the town does have mandatory affordable quote-unquote housing provisions, which either for developments having ten or more units in a building, in a development, require either units to be included that are affordable to low- or moderate-income families, or if determined by the town board, and so that's another board you would have to go to, the imposition of a fee in lieu of affordable units. And so that's what the town has done on certain occasions. There is an affordable housing fund that the town has set up to deal with affordable units. But my question always is, well, where and when are we ever going to actually build affordable units? So, you know, sometimes that, that fee, in my mind, is used a little bit too much. But anyway, so that's something that I think will have to be discussed as we get further into the application. So, I think at this point, what I'd like to do is see if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments on this. This is a great opportunity to do it, if you are here. So, we're just, if you, if you do, we'll recognize you to come up to the podium and state your name and address, and then there's a limit of four minutes for comments. And you.
My, laying over here, but I don't know how to learn all that information.
No, just come up to the podium.
And John, this, this wouldn't necessarily...
My name is Al Burka, and I live at 122 Old Glenham Road. And I don't, this is my house right here.
Ah, okay.
This is, this is my house right here, and the property goes...
You really will need to speak into the microphone.
The property goes up like this, okay? Marty Katz, they've been great neighbors for a hundred and fifty years. I'm not opposed to this, but my concern is, this is my house right here, and it's ten feet off the line. Variances and everything.
Sir, sir, yeah, talking to Mike, but also, you're addressing the board, not the applicant.
Oh, okay, then you made it easy for me. I'm very concerned with the ten feet from the line that my house is on, and then we put these two big buildings up. In the city, there's a little baby church, right in the middle of all these big skyscrapers. I get the feeling that that's what I'm going to look like if they put these big buildings on my, on that line, okay? I'm not, I don't disprove of the, the project. I think it's, it's, it's good. However, I'm very concerned, because if you put three stories up, I really have no privacy on the back, because on my house, the whole back wall, there's nothing but glass. And I hope that you guys take it to some kind of concern. I don't know what we can do with it, but that is a real major concern for me. And once, once we go up, all the way up to here, okay, once we reach this point, I don't care about that. I care about this one. And I hope that the town, you guys, take that into consideration.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this matter?
John, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, John, this is not a new application tonight, so when it does come back as a new application, we would be able to accept more informal comments?
Absolutely. Yes, that's part of the process, yep.
No, I just want to make sure, because there's probably people looking at this tonight, thinking they'd like to speak about it informally and...
And there really wasn't very much of a description of even what this proposal was about in the agenda, so, yep.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people in the neighborhood even know right now.
Okay. But there are no more questions from board members. The next step, obviously, will be for the applicant to put together a, you know, more complete formal application, and for, for the board's consideration of acceptance and referral to other agencies. So, I know we, you probably would have liked to have heard more input from us, but...
That's fine.
Because of the lack of details and the time constraints, I think...
Sure. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and respect them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now, we move to new submittals, and the next agenda item is Appalachian View for Lot Subdivision. The applicant seeks to approve, seeks approval to subdivide a ten-acre parcel into four lots. Lot one, consisting of five-point-three acres, lot two, one-point-two acres, lot three, one-point-five acres, and lot four, two-point-one acres. Lot one currently contains an existing home, which is proposed to be removed, and a detached garage which will remain. The parcel is located at 277 Smith Town Road in the R40 zoning district, and this would be to refer the application to the town engineer, town highway superintendent, town planning board attorney, Rambout Fire District, and the town of Wappingers Planning Board. And with this application, the planning board will allow informal comments from the public, if there is anyone here to do that, after discussion of the application. Welcome, Mr. Burns, and...
Good evening.
Please give us a quick overview of what this is about.
I'm here tonight with the Appalachian View subdivision. It's a four-lot subdivision on just over ten acres of land located along Smith Town Road. The, the site is on the south side of Smith Town Road, about five-hundred feet west of, of Cedar Hill Road, the fork intersection. The applicant proposes to, to subdivide into four lots. With that, with us, with that request, we would also need a, a special permit for the lot size in the residential denicity in the, the AquaFire Protection Overlay District. The, the lots, one of, one of the lots in this current configuration meets the, the one-hundred-and-twenty square feet of lot area, while we can mathematically make three lots meet that. But, the, the over, the actual zoning district is the R40 district. The, there's well, there's actually two wells that are, possibly three wells that are located on the site. One of them will be abandoned. That's the one that services the existing house, which has actually been taken down at this point. There's, there is a, a single, a single garage that is a, a one-story garage located up near Smith Town Road that will remain. That, that's going to remain on the large lot as proposed, lot number one. And the two wells that are going to be used, one is on lot number one, and the other will serve lot, one and the other is on lot number four, and will serve the lots respective, respectively. Each individual lot is also going to be served by an individual septic. The three of the lots are going to be on a shared common driveway, while lot number one is going to have its own individual driveway. The, the driveway locations onto Smith Town Road have been clustered together so that we can, that's the, the area of the best sight distance on the, on the property. Cedar Hill Road is a little bit windy and steep in that area.
Sorry, I just live down the street.
That's pretty much it.
And it might also be helpful for those who've been on the board for a while, might remember that this property was before the board for a larger subdivision application a few years back, that had, what, like ten lots or something like that?
It was, it was ten lots on this parcel, two lots across the street, and involved about eight-hundred-and-fifty feet of the relocation to Smith Town Road.
All right.
And, and the, and the reconfiguration of the, of the Smith Town-Cedar Hill intersection. But that, that, those developers are no longer with the, with the property. And it's only one of the parcels that was involved in that.
Any questions or observations from board members at this point?
Was there any consideration of bringing in the, the water from the old subdivision which we planned on doing? You know, the old subdivision, so you don't have to get a waiver?
There, I don't, I don't believe that there's any provisions to expand the, the water district in that area. I think that, I don't know at this point whether it's been remedied, but in the past, there was a, there was a restriction somewhere in the system. I think that, I think that in order to free up capacity over there, there had to be an interconnection over the, maybe the Route fifty-two bridge in Brinkerhoff or something, but I'm not sure that that...
Well, the town is talking about that now. It's already, the town has already sort of approved that.
I, I can, I could speak with the town engineer and see if we can, see what the, explore the viability of that. There is a, there, there was a file, the Lisbon, on one of the lots... there, there was a file easement on one of the lots over to Who's Boulevard, but I would have to, I would have to see what the, see what the easements are originally was for a connection to the sewer system and an expansion of the sewer district for the previous application. It never happened.
I'm not talking about sewer now.
No, I understand that, but that's what the, the original easement was outlined for, the use of, to bring sewer down to Who's Boulevard.
So just for information, the, the waiver or special permit from the aquifer protection overlay zone would, well, the, the provisions of that overlay zone would allow larger lots if there is both public water and sewer, not just one or the other. But needless to say, so the waiver that's being requested is to accommodate the proposed lot sizes, given the fact that currently there is no proposal for sewer or water. If public water were to be available, you know, that would be something that I think we would be interested in pursuing. But again, that's not currently available, but it may be in the future.
I'd like to comment on that. Do you guys have an idea when they're going to put that water system through? Because that could be years down the line. This is something that's here now, so we'd like to keep going on this.
Excuse me.
And to bring, I am the owner of the property. My name's Ralph Marinaccio. To bring water in for four building lots even, isn't even feasible. If otherwise, if we're going to bring water in, we'd have to go back to the 10 lot subdivision, and that's not feasible.
Well, so anyway, this is something that will, you know, will, could be a discussion as we move forward reviewing the plan. This is not the time to do it because what we're doing tonight is simply accepting and referring the application. And we will refer it to our engineer and our attorney to get their input. So let's hold off on that discussion for now. But thanks for bringing it up, Fred.
I, I have one, one question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Kevin.
I was confused about the number of wells associated with the four lots. Did you have a well for each lot or was there shared wells or?
There's, there's one proposed for each lot currently, but there are, there is a buried existing well that was servicing the house that was taken down that is, is to be abandoned. And there are also two test wells that were drilled as part of the previous subdivision applications to, to prove, to prove that there was actual adequate water of quality and quantity for the subdivision. The, the wells are actually, there's well, there's one well that is, there's one well that is somewhere, I believe it's right in this area here. And then there's also another well that is, I believe, right here. I know those wells have been tested for quantity and quality.
So do you intend to use the existing wells for the existing buildings or?
The, the two test wells will be reused. Is, they're, they're standard wells. They're just, they don't have any electric pumps in place right now. They're just capped off. The well casing, you know, is about a foot out of the ground, normally what you would see. We plan on using them is for, to service the back lot, actually both back lots, lots one and four.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I guess just in future drawings, if you could show the approximate location of the neighboring buildings on the adjacent lots. You have a lot, you know, lots all, lot lines all shown, but it would be helpful to see where the neighboring houses, buildings are in relation to where the new ones are going, even if it's approximate and it says so on the plan. I think it'd be helpful.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Felix, anything? Jody? One thing we did, there was mention that kind of sharp curve and steep road out there near the entrance. So a basic site distance analysis probably would be helpful. There probably was a lot of information with the larger subdivision proposal, but, you know, this is a new proposal and so we need all that information. Also, same, similarly with the onsite and adjacent wetlands, some, you know, description of what the character of those wetlands is.
We do have, the, the wetlands have been delineated. Mike DeWiggy delineated them my, last year sometime. The, the wetlands are essentially the pond that extends on and off the site onto, onto an adjoining parcel and drains through the, the Who's subdivisions, the, the storm sewer system. And there is some, some overflow area that, where the wetland comes out around in the back that's a, it's, it's kind of an overgrown meadow with, with evergreen trees around the outside of it. And it kind of sticks to the, to the tree line is where the, where the actual boundary is.
All right. Dominic and John, I know this hasn't been referred to you yet, but do you have any questions about the proposal?
Not at this time. No, sir.
All right. Okay. Well, why don't we see if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments regarding this proposal? Can I just see if, if there are, please raise your hand and then we'll move from there? Doesn't look like it. Okay. All right, so again, what we're doing tonight is considering a motion to accept the application for the proposed Appalachian View four lot subdivision located at 277 Smith Town Road and to refer this application to the town engineer, town highway superintendent, town planning board attorney, rhombate fire district, and the town of Wappingers planning board. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Some moves.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So obviously we'll have a more complete discussion at the February meeting. Thank you for coming and we'll move on from there.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Good night.
All right, the next item on the agenda is waterfront at Fishkill, phase five overlook point, lot line realignment. Let's see if I can condense this agenda description because it's rather long. But I think the basic thing is that the applicant seeks to realign the lot line between lot two and lot three. This is located at Brockway South and Sylvan Loop in the overlook point development. It's in the RMF five zoning district. The purpose of the lot line realignment is to reflect the modified footprints that were approved for the project a number of years ago, actually. And it's submitted pursuant to sections 132 dash 46 and 13247 of the town official code dealing with lot line realignments. And this has already been referred to our building inspector, zoning administrator, the town planning board attorney, and the town engineer. So they've had a chance to look at it.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse.
Okay, Ravi is going to recuse himself and...
I'm going to refuse myself as well. I live at Six Champlain Way, so it would be very much appropriate for me to do so.
I'm losing people just standing up here. Is that what's going on?
But don't take it personally.
Yeah, right. You thought, you thought you were rid of me. I don't know.
So I'm not sure if we're going to have an actual vote on this tonight, but we'll, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But in case we do, Kevin, would you be open to being appointed as a voting member for your very first meeting?
Yes, I would.
Okay, that is so done. Thank you for, so you will, for this one item, serve as a voting member tonight. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for coming. And please give us a little bit more description of what this is about.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good to see you all again. For the record, my name is David Cooper. I'm a partner with the law firm of Zaren and Stymets, here representing Toll Brothers, the owner of this property. This is the final phase of the waterfront at Fishkill overlook development, phase five. We're here tonight asking for the chairman's endorsement of the final plat. And I'll get to that in a second. As, as most of you will recall, and Mr. O'Connell, good to meet you and, and, and give you a quick background. This is the same application, the overlook application that was before your board. I think it actually started in 2021 and then in February of 2022, you issued site plan approval or amended site plan approval. The reason why we needed amended site plan approval was because this is a multi-phase subdivision project that was, that was approved. Toll Brothers purchased the fifth phase of it and needed to modify the, the lot lines slightly to meet its building footprint. It's really because this is going to be a town, a, the, each footprint is going to match the type of building that they're building. We had to change the footprints very slightly. So because there was a site plan approval the first time around, we needed to come back in for an amended site plan approval. That was issued in February of, of this year. And then we went to the Department of Health to get final approval for the subdivision plat. Because we are, since we are modifying lot lines, you have to file a, a new plat as well. The Department of Health signed off on the, on the plat in December of last year. And we submitted to the town a final plat for the chairman's signature. Now, under your, I mean, recently adopted, I was going to say new, but I think it was 2021. Under your new subdivision regulations, this is a revised lot line application. The, the revised lot line procedure requires the applicant to come before the planning board and the planning board to get comments from its consultants about the proposed revised lot line. It's a bit quirky here because we've, we've already done that with the site plan application. And so we are asking tonight for the board to authorize the chairman to endorse the plat. And the reason why we were asking for that to happen tonight is because it's a bit time sensitive now. There are buyers ready to, to close on the lots, but they can't do so until a plat is filed. And so we would just ask if, because you've already vetted this and you've already seen it, that we get to, we, tonight if we can get the endorsement of the, the chairman, we can still stay on, on that, on that schedule. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions. You, you've seen it, there have been, there are no changes since, since February, other than maybe one or two slight modifications to the, to the, the direction of, of a sewer pipe or something that's now reflected on the plat. But that's because the Department of Health has asked us to do it. But in general, I know, I think CPL has, has reviewed it and issued a memo saying no, no further comments. And I don't believe there's anything new really of substance.
So a quick follow-up question. The plat is very difficult to read in terms of lot lines. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way you could show on the screen where the changes in the proposed lot lines are?
So I, I can't, I just, I don't know if there, if the packet will have the, the before and after. So because what you're, what you're looking at right now is the approved. The, the changes in lot lines would be the changes from the, from the, the old one, the one that before Toll Brothers purchased to now.
The problem is that we, that really isn't part of the application. And so none of us have really had a chance to digest where exactly the lot line changes are occurring.
Just, just to clarify, but Mr. Chairman, you have, with respect to the site plan approval, because the site plan approval showed the before and after. Had I, and I know when that question was coming, I certainly would have, would have appealed with it. And in fact, I, as Dominic can say, I did ask counsel if he needed any other information from us. But the, the changes were the exact same changes that you guys looked at when we compared it with, with, in, in February, when the site plan, the amended site plan approval was issued.
Yeah, so I guess, and I, I think I'll turn to Dominic momentarily. But, so section 13247D1 of the Fishkill Code, this is the part that deals with the lot line realignments that was recently enacted.
Right.
Requires that the applicant submit an accurate survey of the affected properties, clearly showing the lot lines to be revised, showing and labeling proposed lot lines and lot lines to be removed. So my struggling with this is that there is really nothing showing us exactly where the changes are occurring. So Dominic, I'll turn to you to sort of see if you have any thoughts or ideas.
The, the only other piece I would, I would add is that I believe the, the building inspector has already opined that the review that occurred during the amended site plan review is actually sufficient to comply with that, that provision. And so there's, I believe there's a, there's a memo in the file to that. I know I have the memo because we had to provide it to the Department of Health to show that a, that the review is moving on.
Yeah, I saw that the Department of Health has already signed the plat. But so, right, so we,
We don't have that for Jody.
So we don't have, we don't have any of that. I'm looking for a way, Dominic, that the board could in effect approve this and authorize me as chair to sign the plat so we can move it ahead. But I can't personally do it by looking at the plat and saying, aha, here's what the change is, I'll sign it. So that's my problem.
So Mr. Cooper has outlined, you know, I think the situation very well. And so I appreciate that. And as CPL noted, this is a type two action under SEAKER. This is a lot line realignment that was really associated with the amended site plan approval. But nonetheless, does require the filing of a updated plat. There is no public hearing that's required and associated with this application. There are no special conditions. There are no fees apart from what fees and, and conditions were associated with the site plan approval. If the board is inclined to move this along, then what I would suggest is, is that because you typically have as part of your record, a resolution of approval that would support the procedural status of every application that, that you have before you and every approval that you have. But this approval resolution would actually be perhaps the shortest and simplest that you would have in, in your history perhaps because it is, it is for such a minor, you know, de minimis adjustment associated with this project. And so what I would suggest is, is that...
Silence yourself on, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that. Sorry.
Now we all want to know what that was about.
Send him to the corner.
Yeah. We'll be having the panel back there.
We need him, we need him.
It was a good moment of levity. But I, I would, I would, I would suggest that the, the board could authorize the preparation of a resolution, the chairman to sign that resolution and the chairman to sign plat when chairman was satisfied that information's been provided regarding the differences between the filed, the existing filed plat and the new, the to be filed plat. And so that way it addresses your concern to show you exactly what is being changed on this proposed plat. But it would save the applicant from having to come back next month for the mere adoption of a resolution and then the submission after that. So it could speed up that process. There, as I said, there's no public hearing required. There's no SEAKER required associated with this. And I cannot fathom any special conditions or special sets of fees that would be associated with this other than the obligation to pay the fees for the review of this particular asset. Correct.
So that sounds like it was a suggested motion.
Yes.
What does the board think about? What does the board think about doing that? I have no problem with it.
I don't even know what to do. I'm looking at the map.
Yeah, well-
And I don't know what to, can you move over, can you move the thing over to show you the pot that you-
It actually doesn't show.
It doesn't show.
But it doesn't show, right?
That's the pump.
No, it doesn't show anything.
Okay.
Yeah, this, because this is the actual, this would be the new lot line.
Can you tell us ballpark, like, where the change or changes are occurring?
It was, just to address footprints of the buildings themselves, and so they had to adjust some of the lot lines. I don't know offhand, and I apologize, I don't know offhand which lots were actually adjusted. They were minor, because if you remember, the, the site plan approval is actually a letter to the file, because it was found that it was, these were minor changes. But what I can do is, I would wholeheartedly support Dominic's suggestion, and then what we would do is provide the currently recorded plat with the proposed recorded plat for you, Mr. Chairman, to take a look at to see that the changes are de minimis and are the ones that were reviewed the first time around before signing the plat.
It would help me if, rather than my standing there for three hours with Debbie trying to exactly figure out what lots are changing, for you or somebody on your team to use a highlighter and show them.
That's even a better suggestion. Well, I'll do that, yes.
Mr. Chair, with that in mind, if they do that, and you're okay signing, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so, there was kind of a suggestion of a motion. Actually, since we talked about being a Type II action, I would include that in the beginning, in the preamble of the motion, probably.
Yes, so this would be a motion, have different components. One is to deem the application Type II application. The second would be to authorize the preparation of a resolution of approval. The third would be to authorize the chairman to review and sign that resolution of approval, and obviously, the satisfaction of that resolution of approval would also authorize the chairman to sign plat when the chairman was satisfied.
Okay, so that's-
So, we're looking for four votes?
Well, we're going to combine this into one vote. This is going to be a consolidated motion, please. Would you like to move that, Fred?
I'll still make the motion, just-
Yes. All right, that's moved by Fred.
And I'll second it.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? So, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, six of us approving it. Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Good to see everybody again.
I guess we're all set. Thank you. I think we're going to ask Debbie to look through all of the historic records of the town and see if that indeed is the shortest resolution of record.
Yes, please.
I'm going to tell you it's not going to be, because I've seen some real ones, it was two lines.
Oh, don't tempt me.
All right. All right, why don't we bring the other people back in? Here they come. All right, welcome back, gentlemen. Okay, the next item on the agenda, getting into the actual project reviews. This is 1556 Route 52 and 1562 Route 52 Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for to review application and supporting documentation that was accepted and referred at the December 8, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. And we have our conflict engineer, Joe Berger, here to help us out with this one. Welcome.
Just switch this.
All right, so, let me ask the applicant team to just remind the board what is being proposed, and by referring to the plans on the screen, we can move through that pretty quickly, I hope.
Good evening. I'm Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Design. We're proposing a convenience store with a drive-through and expansion of an existing gas station on two lots on the south side of Route 52. There's an existing building to be removed on the left, the west lot, and we need a few variances to make everything fit on these lots. And that, that's the project in a nutshell.
That was quick. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, well, we do have an engineering memo from Mr. Berger. Why don't you go through that, just summarize it?
Yeah, I was just going to read the whole thing.
No, I don't particularly. But, just give us kind of the highlights of what you think are the most important.
Okay, basically, as you saw, it's two lots there. It's going to need to, the project is to extend the canopy and add an additional gas station pump on it while building a new building for the gas station while the existing service station stays. It's on two lots, the canopy will cross over to a second lot. So, one of the questions I had, proposed for council, for the board to consider is, should these two lots be joined into one because the canopy's crossing over? The applicant has showed, has stated they don't want to do that, but I just wanted to raise that point that they were two lots, and the canopy crossed it, and left that to the board and to council to work that out. It's not an engineering thing, it's just an observation. The impervious area is going to be reduced, so that's a good engineering issue.
It actually is going up. I think some of the numbers, I saw some of your numbers, I think some of them got reversed.
Okay, so I was looking at the EAF, so it looked like you were removing, okay, so it's a slight increase.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. Sometimes I speak too loud, so I will try not to. Okay, so, it's under the SWIP requirements, so there's not a requirement to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan because of that. However, impervious, especially if there's a slight increase, should be considered and looked at. They're proposing a dry well down by the driveway, drive-through on the back of the gas station, and they're proposing a level spreader-type ditch to collect the water from the rear of the parking lot and keep it from discharge and point discharge onto the adjoining property. I think as we move forward, we probably need to just substantiate the flow on that, as I mentioned in the report, with a short drainage study, not a SWIP.
Yeah, we can look into that.
So, we could demonstrate to the joiners that we're not allowing additional stormwater and peak in volume to cause problems on the site. The drive-through works fine, the traffic patterns work fine on there, we have an access onto two roads. They will need a DOT permit for the state road, so that will be controlled by DOT. On the site plan itself, they refer to an existing septic for the existing building, but it wasn't really shown, and-
That's on the degrading and utility.
It was just not in complete area.
It's, from what we can tell, it's just a pit. It's not a field.
Yeah, that's, so, I wanted some more information on that, but that's really, I think we need to get a little bit more information on that to make sure that it's not being destroyed by something else.
Okay, yeah, we're going to try to locate it. It's been paved over.
That's what, yeah. The general location was there, but, so that we don't, I think just a little more exploration on that should be looked into if possible.
Okay.
Where the new building's going to be serviced by water and to the fire station to the west, it's going to be approved through, through that process. There are going to be several variances needed on the site. I listed all the ones on Page Three, so you can read them, and they'll need to be going through.
Right, and in fact, I think we did get a, an email from the building inspector, Mr. Petrus, kind of confirming what variances will be needed, so we went through that at the last meeting.
And, yes, and the number of parking spaces do meet the code, so there are sufficient parking spaces for the, per the code. The site is, especially to the south and around, is pretty open, and the drive-through is right up against the joiner's property, even though it's more commercially used. So, I just wanted to point that out to the board within the board's discretion, whether you want a fence or some landscaping to cover that line, specifically since that drive-through will have a board and a window and a most likely light that will be shining in that direction. Would that need to be screened? Just wanted to point that out to the board. That may not be something that the neighbor's concerned with now, but in the future, as someone may buy it, it may be an issue, especially being so close to that property line with the drive-through, and that could easily be done with a fence or some simple screening.
Related to the, to the neighbor, it's, that was all purchased by the fire district behind the property and to the west. That's all owned. It's a, project is getting ready for construction, so make me know who it is.
Yeah, I know. I just want to bring that to the board's attention. That's really a board decision, not an engineering one, but one to bring to the attention of somebody who's aware of it. As we go forward, you have some light poles proposed, so we probably just need a detail of the type of pole, so when they get built, we know what's going to be there. And it's pretty much a summary of everything. It's more detailed in there, as you've all read, but that's pretty much the summary, but the site works well with the pattern. It's permitted, other than some of the bulk setback variances not used. And I guess I can answer any questions the board members may have.
I have a, I have a question on the, on the parking. Emily from the county recommended that we reduce the parking requirements because of the flow-through associated with the convenience store. You mentioned there's adequate parking. Did you look at that?
The parking that they propose meets the code. If you feel, if they accept that reduce, it's, I agree with parking, especially within a gas station. You can use the spaces under the canopy and the drive-through to allow for less spaces. They're not needed as much, especially in the day's world where people want to go to a drive-through, but the provision, the requirement per the code is what they provide. So, if within the deliberations, the decision to reduce, which would help reducing some of the impervious, and applicant is agreeable to it, that's always a good thing to look into.
Have you, she also mentioned access to the site, reducing it from three to two. Have you, did you take a look at that? These are all recommendations from the county planning.
We got a similar verbal comment from the DOT, the same, same thing.
The DOT, I did look at that. I usually refrain from comment on DOTs, because they control that two spots on there, and most likely DOT will ask for that to be reduced to one or show why they shouldn't, and they control that 100%. And if they want to leave the two opening, they won't ask the planning board for your opinion, they'll just do it. And if they want to reduce down to one, they'll just mandate it. And the one off the side road, I think you want to keep that. That's a good one to have, so the only choice of reducing from three to two would be through DOT. So, in my opinion, most of the time, they do ask for it, reduce it. On that site, the two, that, they worked quite well. I went there several times. Didn't seem to be any real concern, the way it works, but again, that would go directly, and we can reach out to the DOT, but that will be right within their planning department.
We've submitted everything to the DOT. They're reviewing it right now. We're waiting for comments.
Okay.
Last question. With the extension of the canopy, will the fire retardant associated with the canopy be, be extended as well?
By code is required.
By the New York State Fire Code updated recently, so we're eliminating the fire suppression under our canopies.
For what, and what are you going to do?
So, we have a number of safety measures in place.
Okay, you're going to implement the other safety measures?
Correct, yes. So, we're getting rid of them in a lot of stations in New York.
As long, yeah, but there's an alternative with the safety measures.
Correct, yes.
So, probably, well, we would want to see what those safety measures are to incorporate in the site plan.
Okay, we could, yeah, we could cite the code, I guess, and put the code on.
Yeah, but specifically what you're changing, how we to build your inspector knows what he's approving.
Right. I don't believe there's any fire suppression on that canopy now. I could double-check, though.
For the record, just please state your name.
Tom Kivitt, I'm a construction manager with CPD Group.
Thanks.
But that would have to be, I think, that would be before the board.
I was just thinking about an extension of canopy, and I'm familiar with perhaps the old rules.
Yeah.
But, but we need some level of fire suppression.
Well, the rule would be that they would have to provide a fire suppression unless they came up with the additional, there's a waiver to it, but the law still requires it, unless you can demonstrate differently.
Well, from my perspective, as a planning, as a planning team, it's a legitimate question.
It is a good question. In future submissions, we should have exactly what provisions they are to meet the code, and just not, just not list the code, but what provisions. We want the building inspector to know exactly what he has to look for at the time you grant site plan, and then going into building permit.
Since we're sort of still branching off of the county GML referral letter, which actually indicated that the application submitted is incomplete, so they indicated that we will need, and of course, the planning board will also say this as well, that we need the architectural elevations and landscaping details and signage details. Some other points that the county raised, we're looking at reducing the lighting levels, especially under the fuel canopy, so that's something that I think we would-
I'd like to comment on that. Typically, lighting under the canopy is a safety issue, and the county planning always comments on that, and it's really a battle between trying to keep the lighting going off-site to the minimum and have a proper safety at nighttime when it's, or even in evening hours. So, I think reducing it down to five under a gas canopy is quite low and probably not good for safety. I think the board could, you know, take that under advisement and agree to higher lighting as proposed under the canopy for safety issues, while maintaining that the lighting going off the site is kept to minimal, and that lights are recessed, so they're not glaring as much, in which they're doing.
Yeah, fully recessed and shielded would at least help to control where that lighting is going.
Yeah, we went through a similar situation in, in the town of Acipsey with the same comment from the county, and we wound up with 10 to 20 foot handles illumination. I think that was the standard, the industry standard for under a pump, under the canopy.
That's actually pretty low, too.
So, that's what we settled with there, so we did the same thing here.
And then, let's see, I don't want to repeat ones. Kevin brought up a couple of good ones there. Oh, also, you know, enhancing landscaping along the street frontage to the extent possible. If, you know, for instance, if the entrance is going to be consolidated on Route 52 down to one, you know, better, let's say, access, there might be some opportunities for low landscaping. Obviously, we don't want to create site blockage issues on the state road, and the state certainly wouldn't allow that anyway, but having some additional landscaping near that frontage might help to blend the development in with the area. And they also mentioned enhancing facilities for pedestrians and bicyclists. Well, since this is going to have a convenience store, there's no reason they couldn't have a bicycle rack there.
I think we could probably, did a bike rack somewhere?
Yeah, I think we could fit that somewhere.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
Are they tearing, are you tearing down any of the houses? Are you tearing down the house next door or not?
There is a existing residential vacant right now on the west lot. That'll be torn down.
Well, the one on the right of the property.
Yeah, the west side.
They used the drive, same driveway.
Yes.
For parking. All right. So, was that house part of the lot that's-
Yeah, that house is on the left, on the west lot, and then the existing service station and fuel station are on the east lot, but they're all owned by the same-
And leaving that house up?
No, that house is going to be torn down.
Oh, it is coming down?
Yes. But the service station will remain. But the service station will remain.
All right. Mr. Chair, do we also talk about because of that, we're putting in the sidewalk or not? Because now that backs up to the firehouse that's going in.
I did not see any sidewalk on the firehouse project. I double checked that.
Yeah, we, we didn't, we discussed that with the fire department and.
Because it's all going to be paved all the way through, I think.
Yeah, basically. I mean, it's, it's not going to be too much different with this site. It's going to be, you know, largely the entrance to the site. You know, it's, it is a tough question. We always have to ask that question to see if the proposal meets the town's complete streets policies. This particular area of Route 52, as you know, Fred, as well as I do, that in the comprehensive plan update draft that we have, this area was considered in need of a future sidewalk. I don't know. I know what we did with the, there was that car wash proposal on Route 9 where we ended up stating in our resolution that when and if future sidewalks are added to that area, it would be, the applicant would agree to put whatever extension of a sidewalk on Route 52 in this case would be necessary. So we might try starting doing things like that. But again, it's, you know, it's like you have to start somewhere, but there also has to be a plan to do it. So.
By the way, who took the pictures and labeled those pictures? That are?
Pictures?
Joseph?
Yeah.
The Google Earth?
Yeah.
Those are Google Earth.
Okay, but Nature Pantry is across the street. That's.
That just comes up on Google Earth if I don't label it.
Oh, okay.
All the information that's on there, I don't add. I just took a snapshot from Google Earth. They sometimes mislabel things all the time, yes. I was just trying to get you a good view from Google Earth, which showed, I thought showed a nice aerial view of the site.
Okay, because I was asking where that wild up reserve was.
They populate it with sometimes old data and incorrect data.
So Mr. Berger did mention the question about the possibility of merging or consolidating the two lots. I actually am one who thinks that that would be a good idea because it takes away any issues about cross easements and access that would be required, you know, without that, with two separate parcels even. I mean, so it sounds like the development parcel, well, it's all the development parcel. So one will have the convenience store, the other will have the gas station. There are going to be a lot of crossing over between the two parcels. It's kind of not really two separate developments. It really is one development proposal. Not quite sure what the reasons of the owner are to not do that, but I think it would be something that we certainly should discuss further, and I think it would be a good idea for the lots to be consolidated. But it's not necessarily something that we can require. I don't know. Dominic, what do you think about that? We can certainly strongly suggest it.
Yeah, correct.
Mr. Chair, are they also combining, bringing the water sewer into the other buildings or just to the convenience store?
Just for the convenience store.
They're keeping the well and the septic for the service station for using on that.
And what about the well and septic for the house, or is that the one that services the service station?
There's separate well and septics for each.
So you're going to, you're going to tear down that, that house, so you're going to be abandoning the well and septic?
Correct. Yeah, the west lot.
Looking at the pictures from Google Earth and looking at the site plan and everything else, you know, we got trailers, things inside here and everything else in there. There's like a shed back there. Is that staying on there?
Shed back there?
Well, there's a, there is like a shed to the back of the property behind the garage.
Behind the service station? That is, that is to remain.
Hmm?
That's to remain. That's shown on the plans as to remain. That's right here.
You also have a gas, propane gas facility. Are you going to be moving that?
Yeah, that'll be moved as well.
Anthony, anything from you?
Did we sufficiently discuss the screening along the drive, drive-through lane? I mean, there's a little bit of greenery, not much, sliver, and then the property line.
Google Earth makes it look like there's more screening than is actually there. When you go out there, you, you see right through to the other property pretty good.
So whether that's accomplished through proposed plantings and a fence, I, I don't know. I, I would think in the future, you know, whoever owns the adjacent property may not want to see the convenience store or the drive-through. I don't think I would.
But it is the fire district, too. They just purchased it and they're getting ready to start construction that wraps around the entire.
It would also prevent people from leaving that property to walk onto the fire department's property, too. So it would serve that purpose as well, perhaps.
Very true.
People do moan around convenience stores, so.
Yeah, in that kind of setting, I've oftentimes seen a fence with some evergreen types of, you know, narrow evergreen trees to kind of help soften the effect of the fence on the, you know, especially, well, from people using the convenience store, probably help that as well, but I don't know.
It could also encourage people to hide. If you put a fence up, it makes it more secluded, so if it's open, maybe, maybe.
Then perhaps just the fence, then, you know, you put shrubbery in a fence, it gives people, I, I don't know, I may be overthinking it, but maybe just a, some sort of fence along that property, PVC.
What do other board members think about that? Talking about, talking about a fence only, I think, at this point.
No, just the vegetation that's behind there is not, is not doing anything to disturb any of that.
Off the property to the south?
Well, I guess wherever the property ends, you know, right behind that house, there's trees, like it's a buffer, I guess, behind the other properties behind it.
There's really not going to be much remaining buffer. The fire district, that's going to be a stormwater pond, that entire area right there behind, right here. This is all pond.
Well, in a way, that might be another reason arguing in favor of a fence there, just to keep people from crossing over and getting involved with the stormwater pond.
Mr. Chair, don't, don't forget, we're also hopefully developing a rail trail, which is right behind that, too.
Yeah. So actually, that is something that the county mentioned, and having, you know, connectivity between this, this area, this site, and the future rail trail would be a good thing. So obviously, the fence, we wouldn't want that to block that kind of access, but there is, whatever that side road is called, is a way that people can walk through that area.
That is a private road right now, so I don't know, does the county have plans of using that road? I haven't seen anything from the county.
I don't know. I think the plans are pretty far off in the future, so there aren't really any details, but. So, well, why don't, why don't you do this? Why don't you see if you can design a, an aesthetically pleasing fence in a, in an appropriate location that wouldn't necessarily block off entire access, but that would provide some degree of separation and screening between the two properties?
Okay.
And then let the board take a look at that and see what we think.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
You haven't said anything about signage. Are you planning any signage? And if so, what is that?
We are proposing a single sign up by the road right here. I don't know if we have any details yet on that. Okay, we can have something in the next submission.
Okay. Second question. Can you just elaborate as to why you've made the decisions not to combine the two lots?
That was, okay.
So CPD Group, we're going to lease this property from the property owner. He being the owner of the lots, he wants to keep them separate in the future. If, in case he wants to sell them off, they're not going to be one lot. So it's going to be, you know, for his benefit, that there's two separate lots that will lease for a certain period of time, and then we'll give it back to the owner. So for him, he just wants to keep them separate.
So the owner is, so it's a, it's a lease?
Correct.
Opportunity for the owner?
Correct.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So are you going to create an easement across the one property for the other?
Not sure if that will be necessary.
Well, you're using the same driveway coming in to the end. You're not creating two driveways, are you?
No, it's all, it's really, it's really, there are two uses to remain out there, but everything is shared. It'll all be owned by the same.
So you're going to have to, so to cross the existing, where the gas station is now, to get to the back of the property, you're still using the same ingress and egress of 52?
Yes.
I think, I think that's one of the arguments for merging the two lots, and in lieu of that, I think we're going to have to come up with some cross easements and other easements and agreements, so that if the owner decides to sell off one part of the property while you're still using both sides of it, there are going to be ways of doing that. There have to be legal agreements in place. Is that not correct, Dominic?
Correct. But we can offer the options to the owners and see which they prefer.
Yeah.
See which one would be easier for them.
Again, I think, I think the merging consolidation is going to be up to the owner. If he has other reasons, we can't force him, but if he doesn't go that route, we're going to have to require cross easements and agreements. And that we can do.
I have a third question, which I neglected to ask because I forgot it. You mentioned there's some wetlands pond behind some of these woods surrounding the two lots. What kind of a remediation do you have in place in case of a spill or an accident that, or a fire that releases petrol to keep it from going into those wetlands slash ponds?
We don't, I don't have anything shown right now, but we haven't had to do anything in the past. There's no specific requirements for something like that unless we were treating on-site. Maybe there would be some type of, you know, carbon filters that could intercept stuff, but we don't have the head to do anything like that, so we're really just leaving it the way it is right now.
Actually, your stormwater proposal actually would make some changes. Anything that comes from this canopy would drain down to the bottom of the page and go into what they have as a swell and level spreader, which are the gravel diaphragm you have proposed there. So that's the area where that would drain to, and some of it, it could find its way down the drive-through into the drywall. So it would probably go more into that gravel area, which is currently there right now, and drain into the ground before we go off-site to a pond, most likely.
So we, we set this up. There's a drywall over here. It only takes runoff from the drive-through lane. It doesn't, the, the runoff from the fuel pumps can't get to that, so.
The way you're grading is that it drains down to that gravel area with the level spreader on.
Yeah.
So all the, all the area from that canopy and the existing service station flows away from the state highway down to that lower corner. And if you go out there now, you'll, that's in the area where there's a large gravel area right now.
Okay, so we're going, you're going to pave a lot of this property, more, more than it's there now?
It'll be an increase, yes.
And where's that going to drain to?
It's going to drain to the back. This, this is a whole low point right here.
But there's a house back there, too.
Uh, that's gone. That's going to be gone. That was all purchased. I think it's been, I don't know if it's been demolished yet.
Okay, so that one's going down? And the, and the other one's going down? How many houses are going down?
Well, that's on the, that's on the fire district's property. They, they bought this house here, and I, I don't know if there's another one behind it, but those are going to be gone as part of their work.
Which one, which one?
It's, uh, right here.
It's off-site.
Yeah, it's off-site.
There's only one building that's being demolished on-site, which is closer to Route 52.
Yeah, it's all, it's up here.
But their stormwater plan basically shows that most of the water will go down toward that gravel area that's in the rear of the site, and a portion of it where the new gas station and drive-through will go to a drywall. I asked them to provide a, what I call a drainage study, not a SWIP, just a drainage study to evaluate the pre-posed, to make sure that those two facilities handle that increase.
Is, is it possibly going to go into the creek?
No, it's, it's, it's pretty far away.
Well, it's not that far, the creek.
It, it, it's a, there's a hundred feet to the railroad tracks, and then the creek is past that, and there's no, this side of the tracks are very low. There's no way for anything to get out of there.
Yeah, we want them to demonstrate that there won't be an increase from this site and that the drywall that they propose and the gravel diaphragm level spreader will handle any increase that they're proposing from the, the parking in the village, so that the flow that goes there now is going to be the same or less. And you mentioned, you know, there's going to be a detention pond the fire department's putting right on this property, right?
Yeah.
So if anything, anything that overflows past these two practices they're proposing from the topography I saw, it'll be going into that pond. So if there's any accident from either over, you know, somebody drives off and lets the gas pull out, or an accident from, flowing from the supplier, which usually is easier controlled because they can pick it up, it's more, somebody drives off and the gas, it'll probably go down into that diaphragm area, and then if it, that doesn't catch it, it'll overflow on into that pond before it goes anywhere else. And then it's responsibility of the gas station to, to clean it up and notify DEC. So there will be a spill notice made and a cleanup, and DEC is pretty good at watching it.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I think we need to do a couple of things tonight, but I wanted to see if anyone else has any other comments, suggestions. We can come back to that if you think of something. But what we do need to do tonight, first of all, so talking about SEACR, State Environmental Quality Review. So it looks to me like the addition of the convenience store and the canopy addition together put the total additions above the 4,000 square foot threshold that would otherwise perhaps have allowed this to be a type two action.
It is, I think this is an unlisted action.
Yeah, that's where I was going with this. So being an unlisted action, I think we need a motion to classify this as an unlisted action. Would somebody like to move that?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Anthony and then Felix seconds it? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we passed that as an unlisted action. And then I think we want a motion to, for the Town of Fishkill Planning Board to declare itself its intent to serve as lead agency, and I would suggest we do this as a coordinated review pursuant to SEACR and to circulate a notice of intent to that effect, because we are going to have some involved agencies like New York State DOT and Dutchess County, Dutchess County Health Department. Not sure about DEC since there's no SWIP required, but Town of Fishkill's owning board of appeals, definitely.
Yes, definitely.
And so this, so Hardy Lane is not a town road. That's a private lane, according to your records?
Yes.
So I suppose we don't need to coordinate this with the Town of Fishkill Highway Department. But anyway, so would someone make a motion to that effect of declaring our intent to serve, doing a coordinated review, and circulating the notice of intent?
So moved.
Moved by Felix. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero. All right, anything else we need to do tonight?
No.
No, sir.
I just would like to make a comment. I'm going to need that.
I'm going to need that, those items from the counties so that I can send it back to them because otherwise the board can't take action until they have that.
Okay, I have most of that stuff ready.
Yeah, and it should all be in one submission so that when we come to the next meeting, we don't get another letter back from the county saying, whoops, sorry.
Yeah, we went through that with another project about a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then after that, that, after that meeting, we can go on to the zoning board?
Well, you could, at that, after the point of the lead agency notice being circulated, you could make application to the zoning board, but they would not, being, being that this will be a coordinated review, the zoning board would not be able to take action on variances until after our SEACR review has been completed.
Okay.
So it'll be kind of a simultaneous process.
Mr. Chairman, also I did point out in my summary, I did mention some housekeeping on EAF, part one.
Yes, oh yeah, please mention those real quick.
So you, you have a copy of them, they're just minor, more technical that need to just be added or corrected so that you have a EAF that could be adopted.
Yeah.
There's nothing substantial on it, it's just.
Yeah, but so it would be, be helpful if you could revise the EAF and submit copies of that to Debbie in the office.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just wondering, I mean, since we're getting a new submission that's going to go to the county, it might make sense to get that submission circulated to the involved and interested agencies.
Yes.
So that they're all looking at the same material.
Typically, yes.
Great idea. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions other than what we've covered already?
Nope, I think I got everything.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good, thanks for coming.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda is 415, 453, U.S. Route 9 and CHI Acquisition Site Development Plan and all the other good approvals that are necessary for to review submission made by the applicant's representative on December 27th, 2022, and to review and consider a draft EAF Part Two, draft EAF Part Three, and a draft negative declaration. Welcome back, Mr. O'Rourke.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard O'Rourke from the law firm of Keenan Bean, PC, here on behalf of the applicant. Here tonight with me is Brad Vander Vliet and Cona Jaeger from CHI Acquisitions. We have Anthony Castillo and Luis Reyes from SESI, our consulting engineers, Amanda Rosa, Stonefield Engineering, our traffic consultant, and, and me, so. We're, we're at a point now where I think we're, the public hearing's been closed. I know that Debbie sent along the draft for the negative declaration as well as the Part Two, and we're hoping that we can move forward with that this evening. And I know we also have some discussion items which we can discuss as well. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, well, why don't we, why don't we get through some of the brief updates? I know the plan has incorporated a few additional things and.
Sure.
Yeah, why don't we cover those first and then we'll ask Mr. Bodendorf to review CPL's engineering memo, which I don't think will take very long.
I could have Luis Reyes from SESI quickly take us through those changes. Would that be helpful to the board?
That would be great, yes, please.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Hello, members of the board. I'm Luis Reyes from SESI and I'll walk you through the changes since the last time we were here. The retaining wall that is along the southern property line, the driveway that basically leads to the Fishkill Golf Course, that has been, the, the grading has been basically revised along that area to lower the retaining wall height to be less than a maximum four feet height. So essentially, we wouldn't need a building, approval from the building department for the, for that retaining wall. And then secondly, the only other changes are that we, we added an additional entrance to the southern parking lot. It's the one that's more east, and that was just for traffic circulation. In terms of CPL's comment letter, we plan in the future for the next submission to forward Debbie an email. So basically, me and Franz Locky from my office, we had a very good meeting with the Village of Fishkill Water and Sewer Department. The meeting was intended to be with Village of Fishkill Water and Sewer Department, Delaware Engineering, which is our understanding, they are the engineers for the Village of Fishkill Sewer and Water Department, and then Dutchess County Department of Health. Unfortunately, the only ones who attended were the Village of Fishkill Sewer and Water Department, but they were the ones who first brought up this concern about the rerouting of these 20-inch water main. We met with them January 4th and the meeting went very well. They are okay with us rerouting the water main and we will email a confirmation email to Debbie, just stating that. Essentially, it went very well and they only had some comments about how they would like for the water main to be during construction, how they would like to see it rerouted and they gave some feedback on that. So essentially, we don't see that, we, we're intending to strike that comment off as well from CPL's comment letter. And we don't see that as a problem with hopefully getting and eventually a approval for this project. It shouldn't hold us up for anything, is what I'm trying to get at. And then I'll jump, next, I'm, next I'm going to jump to the, I believe in the last planning board meeting, there were some questions about signage, so I'm going to pull that up.
Yeah, I think there was a question in particular about how many signs would be on the building facades themselves.
Correct. There would be, for the building, there will be two, two areas that will meet the ordinance that are dedicated to the address for now. So it would show the addresses a lot near the two offices.
While you're doing that, I was, somebody else might have mentioned it, but I'm, I'm just going to mention that there was a letter by Eco Sciences with a report on the timber rattlesnake, which kind of was in line with what we had discussed at the last meeting. That was in a letter dated December 23, 2022, which provides information on why this subject site does not provide habitat for the rattlesnakes. So I thought that was quite helpful.
I think these, these plans are old, they, they're dated October. This isn't the latest that we, let's see if we can find her.
Yes.
Debbie, is this the latest that we submitted?
Yes, that was the presentation that was sent to me.
Um, what about, what about the, so we usually submit the flash drive with a main folder and then a presentation folder? Did you have that?
I have a, I have the presentation folder, that's what I, that's what I put on for the meetings. That's what's utilized for the meetings. That's what was in the presentation folder. If you go back on, you'll see it's labeled presentation folder. That's what I got. I'm trying to get to the bottom of that page.
Yeah.
From this page or the, the document?
Yeah, so essentially, there was a PB03 that was submitted. All right, so I'll just talk about it right, right here, so. At the office locations, there will be a area that is dedicated for basically 220 square feet, dedicated for the signs that are built, that are going to be building mounted. And that is compliant with the ordinance. There's going to be one, one for each side of where the offices are located, and they're in this area, right here. Yeah, yeah, and, and then they'll just have the, the address numbers.
It will have the company name.
Only if the tenant will require it, they will put the company name, but that will still be compliant with the 220 square foot area.
We're not seeking any approval for any building mounted signage other than the building numbers at this time.
Yeah.
So if any tenant requires any signage different from what we're proposing, we'll be coming back before the board.
Okay, but the other question we asked, was anything going to go out on the road?
Yes, there's a monument sign right here. It's located where my mouse is, there's a monument sign located over there. And it will meet the ordinance and it should be on this.
So there's one monument sign?
Correct.
So we're, we're, we have the dimensions and the basic design of the sign, we just don't necessarily know the tenant name at this point.
Yeah, and the location is on the sign and seal site plan set that was submitted to the board.
Yes, yep.
So that's what I have for the signage. Again, the locations are shown on these plans that were submitted to you guys. As for the rattlesnake litter, you already spoke about this, but essentially, yeah, a field investigation was conducted on December 21st, 2022, and in conclusion, given the developed condition of the site, the absence of specialized habitat features required by timber rattlesnakes and the ecological isolation of the property, the site does not provide habitat for timber rattlesnakes and the proposed development will not impact the species. At this, that's, overall, that's kind of what the changes are. I know CPL does have some, still some comments remaining in the letter, but those are more of a conditional terms. And now I was gonna.
Turn it over.
I was going to turn it over to Amanda, but.
All right. The, yeah, if I may, Amanda from Stonefield Engineering, our traffic consultant, will address the issue in terms of the traffic light and where we are with that.
Okay.
And as, as stated by Luis, I think the remaining areas of, of comment are really conditions of final approval, so.
Good evening, chairman, members of the board.
Welcome back.
For the record, Amanda La Rosa with Stonefield Engineering, we are the traffic consultant for this application. Since we were in front of you last, we have gotten confirmation from the state DOT, and I do understand that Debbie has forwarded the correspondence indicating that the traffic signal is to be installed at the central of the three driveways serving the property. So as we are working through the formal design now, I think the board was very, looking forward to hearing which driveway the signal will be at, so we can say with confidence now, it'll be at the central driveway. And they are reviewing the remainder of our conceptual plans from here. We expect to have a few rounds of comments with DOT as we develop our fully engineered plans before we're able to pull the permit for all of the work within the DOT right-of-way.
Great, that's good to hear.
And then as far as the bus stop, chairman, I know that was a, an ask of yours, we are still coordinating with the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. They have some ongoing changes within the bus routes that serve the site, so they're actually ironing that out before they're able to identify exactly where they want the applicant to install the bus stop. But as I mentioned last time, we do have the detail for the features that they will ask us to install once they have identified a location. We will certainly let the board know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Good to hear.
Great, good evening.
All right. John, do you want to just hit any points from your memo that we should hear before we get to the SEACR documents?
Yeah, I, I think they accurately describe the remaining comments as they could be conditions of, of final approval. Really the biggest ones, and they, they've talked about it this evening, are getting the, the sign off from the village and the health department for the, the water line The rest are, you know, getting their wetlands permit, which I, I know they're working on, and a couple minor additions to the SWIP, which could certainly be added prior to final approval.
Can I, can I ask a question on the wetland permit?
Certainly.
What are the, who, which organization is responsible for providing that?
The NY, the Department of Environmental Conservation.
Okay. And, and that becomes an input to the planning board?
Right.
Okay.
Actually, if I recall correctly, the town also is an approving authority for what we call a freshwater wetlands, water course and water body permit, which sort of dovetails with the DEC permit.
Correct, it, it would be part of any approval.
Yep.
Correct. Wetlands are always a, a concern that I have, just in, in general, because we need to protect what we have instead of, you know, we, we need to be consider, very considerate of what we have.
Fortunately, I think, I think in this particular development, the site was already fairly well disturbed and what's being just a minor, what I call a minor encroachment on the wetland buffer area is like behind the building where, you know, there's already been a good bit of site disturbance, so it's, it's not really creating any, any new modifications to the wetland. But that's definitely a good point to look at. Well, so if there are any other questions, I think we need to get through the, reviewing the SEACR documents. So John, do you want to take us through the draft EAF Part Two and Three? And might as well go through the draft neg deck as well, and then we can handle those separately by resolution.
Okay, very good. So, starting with the Part Two, number one, impact on land, we checked that yes. And under number one, item F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, we identified as a potential small impact. Item two, we checked no. Item three, impacts on surface water, we checked yes. Under that item number D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater tidal wetland or in the better banks of any other water body. Again, we identified that as a potential small impact. Four, we checked no. Item five, we checked yes, impact on flooding. And under that, B, C, and D, we thought were all potential small impacts, may result in development within a 100-year floodplain, may result in development within a 500-year floodplain, and may result or require modification of existing drainage patterns. Item six, we checked no. Seven, impacts on plants and animals, we checked yes. Under that, item B, the proposed action may result in reduction or degradation in. Uh, under that, item B, the proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened or endangered species, and we identified that as a potential small impact. Um, item eight, we checked no. Nine, no as well. Ten, impact on historic and archeological resources, we checked yes. Under that, A, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any building's archaeological site or district listed on the National Register, and we identified that as a potential small impact. Eleven, we checked no, twelve, impact on critical environmental areas, we checked yes, and under that, B, the proposed action may result in reduction in the quality of the resource or characteristic which was the basis for designation of the critical environmental area, and we identified that as a potential small impact. Impact on transportation, number thirteen, we checked yes, and under that, um, F, other impacts, the proposed warehouse will increase the number of large trucks on Route nine traveling to and from the site. Again, identified that as a potential small impact. Uh, fourteen, impact on energy, no, fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light, we checked yes. Under that, A, the proposed action may reduce or produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Again, uh, identifying it as a potential small impact. Sixteen, impact on human health, we checked yes, and under that, item A, the proposed action is located within fifteen or two feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home, or retirement community, and we checked that as a potential small impact. Seventeen, consistency with community plans, we checked yes, and H, other, the proposed action is located within a gateway area designated within the town of Fishville's comprehensive plan, adopted two thousand and nine, and we identified that as a potential small impact. And then eighteen, consistency with community character, we checked no, and that brings us through the part two.
A question on, on one, one E, about the proposed action as construction that may continue for more than one year. How long is the construction anticipated to take for this?
Ten months.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Van Fleet says ten months, but, you know.
No, I mean, it's a large site, so.
Yeah, right.
That's fair, we could leave the response as is for now.
So if there are no further comments on that, um, the, the part three, obviously, is just, uh, kind of a type form. So do you want me to move to the draft neg deck?
Yeah, why don't we go through the neg deck and then we'll go back to, um, approvals?
Okay, um, this project has been before the board for quite some time, I'm not gonna go through the description of the action, I think we all are pretty familiar with what they intend, what they're intending to do. So I will skip to the reasons for supporting the draft neg deck determination. The planning board makes the following findings supporting and substantiating this determination. One, the proposed action will involve twenty-six point five acres of disturbance, of which twenty-two point three acres or eighty-four, eighty-four percent will be impervious, with the remaining four point two acres of pervious area consisting of lawn landscaped area. Portions of the project site have already been disturbed by previously completed construction of a building and the related utilities. A preliminary SWIP has been submitted for the proposed project. The proposed site development has been situated to maintain existing drainage patterns where possible. The plans include provisions for water quantity and quality control in accordance with current stormwater regulations. Stormwater management measures indicated on the plans and incorporated into the project design include both temporary and permanent measures to address water quantity, quality, and erosion sediment control. Also, areas disturbed for development that do not contain buildings and other impervious area will be stabilized as lawn and landscaped areas, which further prevent sedimentation. Properly implemented, the proposed measures reduce the likelihood of any adverse impact occurring. Number two, the project site includes a portion of a DEC wetland area, of which only the buffer area will be disturbed in areas by the proposed project. The project site also contains a hundred-year and five-hundred-year floodplains, as noted above, a preliminary SWIP has been submitted for the proposed development. The proposed site development has been situated to maintain existing drainage patterns, and I'm not gonna repeat all the same language, but it essentially says that the, the SWIP covers any potential impacts to those features. Uh, number three, the project site was flagged in the EAF as potentially containing habitat, habitat for the timber rattlesnake. However, as the site has been almost entirely previously disturbed, it is unlikely that the proper conditions for habitation currently exist at the site. And we could also add to that, that they had submitted with their most recent submission, um, a report that essentially states that there is no suitable habitat for the timber rattlesnake. Does that sound fair? Yeah?
That's a good idea.
Uh, number four, the site is adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites. However, none of the historic areas are on the site, and there should be no adverse impact to historic sites. As summarized in the phase one archaeological investigation submitted by the applicant and prepared by Carol S. Wee dated to September twenty twenty-two. OPRHP issued a letter dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, stating that they concurred with the conclusions of the phase one report. Uh, number five has to do with complying with the, the code for noise pollution. Number six, traffic impacts were reviewed by the town, towns' traffic consultant and DOT, and certain improvements, including a traffic signal along Route nine and a right turn lane at the southern site entrance, will be implemented as a result. Additional transportation mitigation measures have been addressed in the proposed site development plan, including the addition of a sidewalk along the west side of Route nine, and installation of a bus shelter and bike racks on the site. The proposed, number seven, the proposed action will result, will not result in any impacts on geological features or groundwater, air, agriculture, aesthetic, open spaces, recreation, and energy resources, or transportation systems, or human health. Excuse me. Number eight, the proposed warehouse is located within fifteen hundred feet of Dutchess Community College at Fishville, a satellite educational facility. The proposed warehouse and DCC at Fishville are located within a planned shopping center zoning district, and are situated on formerly occupied and abandoned buildings or sites in the existing shop, shopping center. The PSC zoning district allows both of these type facilities in a mixed-use setting, and encourages the redevelopment of abandoned buildings in such settings. Uh, number nine, the town of Fishville comprehensive plan, adopted two thousand and nine, identifies this area along Route nine as an important gateway entrance to the town, with the objective of preserving, enhancing the visual character of such corridors and distinguishing Fishville from other municipalities. The applicant has incorporated architectural design features into the building plans and enhanced landscaping features into the proposed site development plan to help blend the large-scale warehouse building into this gateway corridor. And that's it.
Thank you, John. Any, um, any suggestions for any further revisions, uh, in the neg deck at this point that we're talking about? Or any questions? Dominic, did you have any thoughts or suggestions?
No, sir, I thought it was comprehensive.
Okay. Alright, well, if we're ready to go through, um, let's do the environmental assessment forum, parts two and three first. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the EAF parts two and three for the proposed warehouse known as four fifteen, four fifty-three US Route nine CHI acquisitions, as discussed tonight, and authorize the chair to sign these?
I'll do that, Chair.
Fred moves that. Anthony seconds it, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the negative declaration, draft number two, for the proposed warehouse known as four fifteen to four fifty-three US Route nine CHI acquisitions, as discussed and revised tonight? And to authorize the chair to sign that?
Some.
Felix moves it, is there a second? Alright, Ravi seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Okay, um, so we got through that, so I think I'll look toward Dominic and John to see what thoughts are about preparing draft resolutions of approval. Now, so one question that comes to mind is, well, actually, one thought that comes to mind is there are actually gonna be four separate approvals, right? There are gonna be, there's the, um, site development plan, there's the subdivision approval, there's the floodplain development permit that'll have to be approved at some point, and similarly, the freshwater wetlands, et cetera, permit. And I think how we handle that partly would be dictated by whether we're looking at preliminary approval at this point, or preliminary and conditional final. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that, and then we can kinda canvas the board on where we should go with that.
Well, in my mind, in my experience, uh, preliminary approval without granting conditional final approval is appropriate in situations where the project may change as a result of, uh, other agency input. And I'm not aware of any particular aspects of this project that would likely change, especially now that, uh, confirmation has come from DOT regarding the location of the signal. Uh, and so I think that any other changes that might, uh, occur would be fairly minor. I mean, it, it's possible that it could be something more than that, but, uh, you know, as, as the process unfolds, but I'm not anticipating any. So to your question and your point is, is that I would suggest that the board consider, uh, authorizing resolutions, including a resolution for both preliminary and conditional final site plan approval. That would be combined in a resolution with the special permit, uh, and then the other, uh, resolutions would be handled separately since they are separate actions, one for the subdivision and the other for the wetlands water course permit. That would be my recommendation, but I'm open to suggestions, and of course, I'm your consultant, so I'll endeavor to do what, what it is that you direct me to do, but I also think that it might be helpful, uh, for the board to hear from the applicant, uh, representative, because Mr. O'Rourke may have some thoughts and suggestions in connection with this as well.
And also, yeah, let's go to that in a second, but I just wanted to double-check with John in terms of the remaining elements that, um, you know, you had in your memo and how those would be done as conditions.
Yeah, I, I don't, there's nothing remaining in my memo that, you know, I would consider not being appropriate as a condition of approval.
So that could go as a preliminary and conditional final approval, in your mind?
Yes.
Alright, so, Mr. O'Rourke, what are, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think in light of, of what your consultants have said, and the fact that they have not identified anything else that would stop us from moving to, uh, a conditional final, uh, approval, I would respectfully request that we do that. I know as part of our submission, we prepared draft resolutions for, um, for such approval, for obviously the planning board's consultants to take a look at, modify, and make sure it conforms with whatever format that you, you use. Uh, we've prepared that, we would respectfully request that at the next meeting, if not tonight, but at the next meeting, that, uh, you adopt resolutions granting us the approval, so that we could then move forward with the project.
Yes, I was going to thank you for submitting those, um, draft resolutions, um, maybe we should have you come back and do more of them for us.
No, that's quite alright, yeah. But thank you, I'll take that as a compliment.
Yes. Alright, well, let's see what the planning board members think about, uh, looks like the, so far, the consensus seems to be going for, um, preliminary and conditional final approvals, and then, um, but let's see where we go.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I think we can move forward.
Yeah, I think the bus shelter is the one thing that we would, that could be a potential change at this point, from what I was hearing, so.
Yeah, and that's, sounds like that could probably be handled as a condition of the approval.
Yeah, I would think so, so I, yeah, I'm not hearing anything else.
Jody, what do you think?
Nothing, I, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Fred?
Pretty complete, so. I can't see, the only thing we're waiting on is the, the village with their water.
The water line.
Something formal from that, but other than that, I hear he also done it, DOT with the bus stop.
And of course.
And that is, and that's a minor.
Of course, all the, all the final details for, you know, the DOT approvals on the, the traffic signal on the turning lane. What do you think? Alright, well, let's do it, here's a, here's a sample motion that somebody could consider moving. Would someone like to make a motion authorizing our attorney Dominic Cordisco to prepare draft resolutions of preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval? Now, so would this also be preliminary and conditional final subdivision approval? I would think so.
Correct, I, once again, I don't see any changes happening in connection with the subdivision.
Yeah. And then, um, floodplain development permit and freshwater wetlands water course, water body permit, so those would all be handled through separate resolutions.
Yes, there would be four altogether.
Four altogether, for the four fifteen, four fifty-three US Route nine CHI acquisitions proposal for the board's consideration at the February nine, twenty twenty-three meeting. Would someone like to move that?
Some moves.
Bob moves it.
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright.
Thank you, very, very much, appreciate it.
All set for.
Uh, Chairman, can I just remind the applicants that, um, will need for those resolutions, an estimate of the, the site? Yeah, performance bond estimate and landscaping bond estimate.
Yeah, that's all.
Right.
Yeah. Our engineers are here tonight, and they heard it, so, okay. Oh, yes, if I may, um, Mr. Van Fleet, um, respectfully request that, we're now at the final stages of this, in terms of the, uh, preparing a bond estimate, uh, construction cost, things of that nature. Would we have your permission if our consultants could speak directly with, uh, John about working out the details of that?
Sure, we can authorize that.
And any, that's okay, we can chat, okay.
So could we have a motion, um, authorizing, and is there any reason for, um, correspondence with our attorney? So could we have a motion authorizing, and is there any reason for correspondence with our attorney as well at this point, or?
Well, it's always a joy to talk to Dominic, so, you know.
But is it a necessity?
Yeah, no, but seriously, I mean, we just want to work out the details, make sure we can move the process in accordance with the schedule that you've given us.
Why don't we make it a more general motion to authorize our consultants to communicate with the applicant's team in working out any final details on things such as cost estimates and other final details? Would someone like to move that?
Some move.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Fred was seconding it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Well, we are starting to get a little far along on the clock. I was going to ask if anyone wants to take a break, but I think we should just do it individually as needed, as opposed to actually taking a full break.
I think that's a better way to do it.
Yeah.
It's a real push here.
Yeah, still have a ways to go. All right. So the next item. Bless you. The next item on the agenda is Johnson Trails five lot subdivision, or to review submission made by the applicant's representative on December twenty eighth, 2022, and to review and consider a draft negative declaration and a draft resolution of preliminary approval.
Good evening, board members. Albert Roberts, attorney, appearing for the applicant. Last month when we were here, the board reviewed the part two and part three of the full EIF, answered the questions, and directed that a resolution for negative deck be prepared. And concomitant with that, they also directed that a resolution of preliminary subdivision approval be granted. And both documents have been prepared, and as I understand, have been presented to the board. And if the board is so inclined, we would ask that they be adopted tonight so that the applicant can then proceed to the health department to work out the finer details of site development and well placement which were of concern to the board. And at that, I'd like to, I just have one question. In the resolution of preliminary subdivision approval, in page two, paragraph A, second to the last line, it refers to lot, LOT, as opposed to lots. And I'm not, I think the correct terminology would be lots, but I'll have to defer to the consultants. And at this point, I would like our engineer to come up because he has some additional comments. Thank you.
All right.
Dominic did wink to me on the way out, said he'd be right back.
So speak very slowly.
Well, and other than that, I think it's probably more of a typo on the resolution. I guess we can have a discussion pending moving forward tonight on the NAGDEC and the resolution of preliminary. As this board probably is aptly aware of, we're a couple months off from the bat season, which starts in March. And what that requires is that trees are not allowed to be removed after the end of March, basically throughout the spring, summer, and fall up until October. So I was, I didn't know particularly how this board typically handles that. I don't know if they've been, you've been dealing with that at all of any projects this year. I'm sure it was a couple last year.
Yeah, it comes up.
So I wanted to bring that to a point. I didn't want to come back here, you know, in March when we had a week and a half left pleading with you. So I was hoping whether that was a request and then that it could be incorporated potentially into this resolution or just a separate motion, not particularly sure again how this board treats that, but I didn't want to wait too long before having that discussion.
Well, before we get to that, first of all, just checking, I'm pretty sure this won't take long, but were there any other updates in the plans that we should be aware of?
I don't particularly think it's none different than this board has seen the last couple of times and is aptly familiar with.
All right. So, John, I wanted to check in with you because you did not submit an engineering memo because there were really no, in a sense, nothing to respond to. But you did indicate in an email to the board that there were still some remaining CPL comments and coordinations regarding the SWIP and the traffic-related comments that will require coordination with CPL reviewers. And once that's completed, you would issue an updated review letter. So I mean, I'm, I guess I'm kind of asking you whether, at this point, we should go through the draft NAGDEC and resolution with things pending. I guess what I want to check with you is whether those things are things that would affect the seeker determination and.
No, what I've been told more than once from our team who's reviewing, the person who's reviewing the SWIP and the person who's reviewing the traffic stuff is that the remaining items are not anything major and should be easily, very easy to address. There just hasn't been a formal meeting between the applicant and those reviewers to finalize those items. But there's certainly nothing outstanding that I could see that would hold up considering a vote on NAGDEC and preliminary approval tonight.
Any thoughts on that, Dominic?
I concur. You know, I think that this is a situation where preliminary approval would be appropriate, and these outstanding items can be addressed by the applicant and considered by the board prior to it granting conditional final, which would happen at a later date.
Okay.
John, my only question at this point is about the infiltration trench. I believe the applicant was suggesting that the town would accept responsibility for the maintenance of that trench. I don't think the town would do that.
Well, does that refer to the trench in the Hammerhead Turnaround area?
Yeah, that's correct. The infiltration trench shown in the Hammerhead Turnaround area, that whole area is going to be dedicated to the town, so it will ultimately be their responsibility.
Yeah, and largely, that was there, put there to accommodate the snow coming off the town road, you know, so.
And then in terms of maintenance for the actual stormwater management area on Lot one, which is not being dedicated to the town, but there would be a stormwater maintenance agreement regarding that, which is always a little tricky when there is a single lot owner having responsibility for it. But that's all the more reason to have a really good, clear agreement in place. So that would be, you know, one of the conditions should we go as far as preliminary approval tonight. So it sounds like unless any board members have any objection to moving ahead with reviewing the draft NAGDEC document that CPL prepared, and if we get through that, then going to consider the resolution of preliminary subdivision approval. So, John, do you want to take us through the NAGDEC?
Sure. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through the description of the project. I'll just go right to the reasons for supporting the determination. One, the proposed action will disturb approximately 4.4 acres within the eight-point-seven-two-acre project site. Although 1.6 acres of the developed site will be impervious, the remaining 7.12 acres are approximately 18.34. Well, that's not right. I need to correct that. Will be pervious area consisting of lawn, landscaped area, and existing vegetation. I believe, I'll have to recalculate that and get that, it's not 18.34%. It's more like eighty-two, eighty-one. The next paragraph describes the preliminary SWIP, which we went over in more than one instance in the previous NAGDEC. Two private wells and septic systems are proposed to serve the five proposed lots and will be reviewed and approved by the county health department. In addition, monitoring of adjacent wells during the test well pumping is from proposed by the applicant. Three, notation is included on the plan stating that tree clearing shall only occur between October fifteenth and March thirty-first due to potential Indiana bat roosting habitats. In addition, at the board's request, the applicant has included a tree preservation plan to preserve a significant number of mature trees within the areas of disturbance, as well as the majority of trees in the perimeter areas of the site buffering adjacent residential areas. Four, the proposed action will result in an increase in noise pollution, and it references the appropriate section of the code. Five, the applicant has submitted a traffic summary report to support the proposed location of the new town road. And the DOT has stated in a letter dated August tenth that access from the proposed subdivision site directly to Route eighty-two would be a safety concern due to inadequate site distance. And therefore, DOT has denied direct access to eighty-two. The board has determined that the safest and most efficient access to the proposed subdivision would be via New Road, to be known as Johnson Court connecting to Mountain View Road. And six, the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, surface water, groundwater, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open spaces, and recreation, energy sources, or transportation systems, or human health.
So how should we handle that correction in the percentages in number one?
Give me a sec.
All right. We're going to get a new calculation, so let's not disturb him.
I think it got carried over.
Dominic, meanwhile, maybe you can think about this, but the applicant is requesting permission to do tree clearing or tree removal within the, you know, Indiana bat window that ends, what, March thirty-first, I think?
Correct.
And whether or not that's something that we could include in our resolution. So the resolution does deal with the tree preservation plan, and that's something that I was very interested in making sure that we have something in place, you know, more fully detailed, indicating how trees that are to be preserved will be preserved before we could, you know, think about having any trees being cut. So as we get to the resolution, maybe that's something that we could deal with further. I know it's, it's something that the planning board doesn't have specific control over necessarily, but once we, assuming we adopt a NAGDEC, that kind of opens the window for tree removal. But I think it needs to be done in a, in a clear, logical, specific manner that the planning board is going to be comfortable with. So if there's a way we can address that in the resolution, we should see if we can maybe add some wording to that effect. So what did you come up with, John?
It should read eighty-one point six-five percent.
Eighty-one point six-five percent. Well, you were close.
Yeah, they just, they calculated the pervious instead of the impervious.
I'm glad it was so noticeable that you noticed it. Okay, so there's that one correction. Any other, any questions or comments by planning board members on the NAGDEC? All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the NAGDEC for the Johnson Trails five lot subdivision as discussed and revised tonight? And authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Bob moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the NAGDEC passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's go to the resolution of preliminary subdivision approval, draft number six. So Dominic, without reading rubatum.
Oh, I have no intention of reading it.
Thank you.
And I don't think you could actually make me, so.
And I don't think we want to, so let's get right to it.
Yeah, so this, once again, this is a resolution of preliminary approval. And so it does require that the applicant come back before the board would have proposed final plat. And it outlines a number of conditions. Obviously, some of them are conditions that could also potentially be conditions of conditional final because there's not necessarily a requirement that in order to come back for conditional final that they actually have to satisfy all of these things. But the idea was to outline, at least at this point, what the anticipated conditions would be and things that ultimately have to be satisfied for the plat itself to be filed. So that being said, there's a number of conditions here. Just go over them quickly. They have to satisfy the outstanding engineering comments. They also have to get approval from the DOT for the work permit for any construction improvements to the Route eighty-two right-of-way. They have to get approval from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for water supply and onsite sewage disposal. Approval from Central Hudson Gas and Electric and other relevant utility providers for underground utilities. Approval from the DEC for the speedies permit. There is dedications to the town of Fishkill for the streets and the easements. And then we touch upon this tree preservation plan. The applicant has submitted a tree preservation plan, and the board can require an agreement with the applicant that would be recorded, in my mind, and be in the chain of title that would identify this area that on the site that's been shown on the plan and what's being done essentially to ensure that those trees are going to remain undisturbed at a minimum. And so the preliminary approval identifies the fact that there should be a draft agreement submitted so that the board can review that as part of its ongoing review. Those are the essential elements of this, you know, and it has other standard conditions. I, you know, I'm happy to discuss that one further. I did not put suggestions into this draft as to what that draft agreement should say because I don't know, A, what the applicant is proposing to do in terms of how, what mechanism apart from an agreement would, what it would contain. And then, secondly, it's most important for the board to be satisfied that what's being proposed will be protective of those trees. So it's left open-ended, but it does provide that the tree preservation plan and the agreement have to be satisfactory to the board and its consultants.
In connection with that, am I permitted to speak?
Yes, please, please, Derek.
To work that out. I mean, it can be done in several ways, a formal agreement, recorded. You can do it as some sort of negative easement, so prohibiting the property owner. But I think we would have to identify the area or the trees. That would have to come from the engineer.
Yeah, well, that's already done in the plan set. Yeah, well, that's already done in the plan set. I forget which drawing it is, but.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Correlating that with the tree removal within bat season or before bat season, do you have the trees identified that you would like to be removed by March thirty-first?
Yeah, on our tree preservation plan, we indicate those plants, those trees are to remain and those that are not to remain, right? So the idea would be that with regard to the extensive disturbance, we would have that, this is unproposing, is that extensive disturbance, you know, would be identified, survey laid out. So we knew in terms of the perimeter, it could go no further than what's shown on that plan. So that provides a hard limit. And then the trees internally, which we're trying to certainly keep, those could be flagged in the field so that when the tree removal actually takes place, those are known to stay. So that's the way I've dealt with it in the past. So it provides some assurance. I think in terms of the, what I understand, the agreement that would be, would be that, would be something that would be filed, which would be unnoticed to any of the new property owners that they could go to just clear cut their property, right?
That's correct. That's the intent is to, you know, have longer-term preservation of those trees.
Right. We're trying to keep buffers.
Subsequent owners as well.
Neighbors and all that kind of stuff. So I think we can certainly look at that type of mechanism between now and as we move forward to the final at some point back before this board. But again, the ask now is to go ahead and remove those trees, which I've identified to be removed on the plan. Preserve those that shall remain and then, you know, allow for, and again, this is not grubbing, this is not taking stumps out, you know, any of that. This is just taking trees down, so looking forward to potential spring and summer building season. We wouldn't have to be worried about taking those trees down and not meeting DEC's requirements.
So let me ask, if I may, Mr. Chairman, A, some questions regarding the tree removal because I want to make sure that we are all clear that the agreement for the tree preservation plan obviously deals with trees and it's related, but it's a separate issue, in my mind, from the, what they're asking now, which is permission to remove the trees that are not to be preserved.
Yeah.
And if that's, that is not an atypical request, it would require an additional provision in this draft resolution. But I want to make sure, we're talking about tree removal, but we're not talking about soil disturbance. So what, so the trees are cut, are they allowed to stay on site? Are they being chipped and, or are they being hauled off-site? Or, I mean, what's the nature of that operation? Because it has some impact because it's one thing to go out and just take a chainsaw and take down trees and have them lie there, which satisfies the bat requirement, by the way.
Absolutely.
You know, and they, you know, but it also can be an eyesore too, to the neighbors because all of a sudden trees are lying there and they may be there for some time, right? Because it's going to take a number of months to satisfy all of these conditions, come back before the board, have the board do its process for conditional final. So theoretically, it could be a number of months where those trees are out there. But on the other hand, if they're going to be processed or chipped and that's going to be hauled off-site, then how that operates is a detail that the board might want to give some consideration to as well.
And of course, that could result in some further site disturbance that we may or may not be ready to see happen. Also, I think it's better habitat-wise through the, you know, winter and spring months. If you leave, you know, felled trees on the site, it does provide habitat for birds in particular and other, you know, smaller animals.
It does. Including bats.
The intent would be just to take the trees down. If, I don't think, in terms of, yes, there's going to be some time. We've already actually jump-started with the health department, so we're hoping that we don't come back here in, you know, August for a final. You know, we have to drop test wells, we have to do testing, things such as that. So yeah, that's going to take time. But, you know, at this point, it's really just lopping the trees off at the base. And if the board's comfortable, we can certainly leave them in place and until such time that we get our finals and then start building road and things such as that. But we just want to make sure we don't lose that date because that's quite holed up.
That being said, I mean, I've obviously deferred to the board, you know, but we can add a provision to this resolution. It would be a new paragraph, perhaps a new paragraph eight, that says that the applicant is authorized to cut the trees outside of the tree preservation area once they've been properly, once the tree preservation area has been properly identified on the site, as well as trees outside that area. Because there's some trees that are, that are outside tree preservation area that are going to be preserved.
Right.
Is that correct?
Well, I think those are probably shown on the plan as tree, yeah. I think the way the plan shows it is there are certain perimeter and buffer areas that are shown as tree preservation area, but there are also areas within the overall area of disturbance that are also shown as tree preservation areas.
For to remain.
To remain, yes.
And that was the idea, was we can stake out the limits of disturbance so we have a good feel for that in the field and show exactly what's on the plan.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and we'll get the trees that are going to remain within the areas that the lots are going to be developed. We'll get those flagged so in fact they know that those trees are not to be taken down. And then we should be at a point where, you know, we're, we're good. I mean, yeah, in order to provide some oversight, we can get all that together. And if there has to be an inspection out there, that would be fine.
And tell me again what the site plan sheet number is that has?
I believe it's six.
Number six.
S five, actually, right?
Five.
S five is tree preservation plan.
So Dominic, I think is working on polishing up that addition. But, oh, so meanwhile, on that, hey, at the top of that same page, page three, refers to the memorandum presented to the planning board by the town engineer dated. And there's a blank. I think we have to refer to the most recent one, which is, I think it's December fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
That's correct.
Meanwhile, while Dominic is working away on that, any, any other thoughts or questions from board members?
Yeah, I have a question about condition six. Does that capture any bombing that would be required for the new Johnson Court or the Hammerhead? Because those are going to be dedicated to the town.
Yeah.
Not yet, if I may. I mean, that would be set forth in detail in any conditional final approval resolution.
Yeah, and there's actually a whole process, actually, that needs to be gone through for dedications of roads and other facilities to the town, which involves the town board in accepting those. So those will be addressed at the final conditional approval stage, I think.
Yeah, that's pretty standard.
Felix, anything else? You always come up with good ideas. All right. I'm just trying to kill some time.
Yeah. So here's what I have so far, and obviously I welcome any suggestions. That the applicant is authorized to clear the trees on site upon this approval and consistent with the restrictions on the timing of tree removal to minimize impacts on protected bat species, which trees shall be removed outside the tree preservation area, comma, provided that the applicant first delineates all of the trees that are to remain on site and be preserved.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Does that sound okay to the applicant?
Sounds okay to me.
It's pretty good on-the-fly sentence there.
Every once in a while I shine. Not always.
Usually. Okay. All right, well, are we ready to go ahead with a motion to approve the resolution as revised? So do we have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary subdivision approval for the Johnson Trails five lot subdivision as discussed and revised tonight? And to authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we did it. That passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
One last question.
Yes, certainly.
There's a number of documents I have to review with Dominic. I asked for permission for one, but I assume I have the authority to review all the required documents now.
Have, I don't, have we authorized that yet?
You haven't, so I think he's asking.
So yes, why don't we do that? So could we have a motion to authorize our consultant attorney to communicate with the applicant's attorney on working out details?
Document preparation.
Document preparation. Sounds good.
I'll second.
So Anthony moved it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your courtesy. Good night.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Well, Jody stepped out, so I don't know if that can start.
No, that's fine.
Went six zero.
I think we're good.
And then we're two.
Thank you.
All right.
Come on up.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is westage self-storage site development plan and freshwater wetlands permit for to review submission made by the applicant's representative on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. All right. Well, why don't you give us an update on what you did?
Sure. Good evening. My name's Karen Labruto. I'm a senior planner with Lovell Associates. I'm joined here tonight by the applicant Bobby Patel of Fishkill Storage and also Neil Alexander of Cuddy Fetter.
I can get you there if you have it, okay?
I think I got it. Okay, so our last meeting was very productive. Here, we learned that you all really wanted to see reductions in impacts to the water course buffer. And we also learned that you were not adverse to the idea of going story taller. And so we've done those things. We've gone from four stories to five stories. But in return, we have reduced the impact to the water course buffer from zero point one-two acre to zero point zero-six acres. And so we've removed all of the pervious impacts to the water course buffer. What remains are the grading-related impacts, which would be re-vegetated. As a result, we've also seen a reconfiguration of our stormwater areas. Primarily, previously primarily it was found to the south of the building, but now we've made that portion smaller. You can see that there are two to the north, one directly north and one to the northeast. In addition, we've moved the truck turn area in the northwest corner of the site out of the, you know, out of the water course buffer. And as a result, we've also reduced the length of the retaining wall that's located there just north of this stormwater management area. In addition, we've also reduced the number of parking spaces. Previously, we had seventeen spaces. As we submitted in our documentation, the ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineers, I think, their parking generation manual recommends as part of the eighty-fifth percentile recommendation for parking demand for self-storage facilities, eight parking spaces for a facility of this size. And so we are proposing ten at this point. And let's see, what else can I tell you? So the hatched area shows where the grading impacts into the water course buffer would be. But again, they would be re-vegetated. What you also see here in the southeast corner is a notch, which allowed us to pull the pervious section, you know, the pervious part of the, well, which allowed us to pull the building, which was also a pervious impact to the water course buffer, out of it. The building, the stories above that would, would fulfill the whole footprint there. So each floor is now eighteen thousand seven hundred and eleven square feet. Previously, it was around nineteen thousand square feet. We have a total gross square footage of ninety-three thousand five hundred and fifty-five square feet. And to give you, oh, on the lighting, as was suggested at the last meeting, we've reduced the lighting by one on the west side and we've reduced the lighting on the south side by two. We also got the shippo sign-off, state historic preservation office sign-off over the last month or so. And since our submission on the twenty-eighth, we received an email from the New York State DEC on January fourth that there would be no impacts likely to the timber rattlesnake given the I eighty-four corridor between that and the Hudson Highlands area and that no further review is needed. Are there any questions?
That was doubtful.
Any questions from board members and/or comments? And then I'm going to, well, before that, let me just mention that we did not get a memo from CPL because there was no full plan set revised received. But did you want to comment any further, John, on anything, any, anything about that?
No, I, I think, you know, a lot of the changes are positive. The building footprint didn't decrease that much, but they did pull it out of the water course buffer. So there's no direct impact there. So, yeah, I mean, if the board is okay with this layout, we look forward to getting a full submission and we'll continue our review at that point.
So let's go around and see if there are any comments, observations, or questions. And I think, you know, the first thing we obviously need to do is focus on the question of whether we're happy with the revised building configuration, which is a taller building. Balancing that with some, you know, minor, I call it minor, lessening of impacts to the wetland buffer. But what we end up getting is actually a substantial increase in square footage of the building. So whether we're happy with those kind of trade-offs, I'll give you my opinion, but I first wanted to hear from other board members.
I'll jump in then. I appreciate the effort that was made. It's what we asked for, so I do appreciate that. But the net decrease in the building footprint, the net decrease in impervious and the net decrease in impacts to the water course buffer was minimal, considering that one floor has been added to the building. I also think the magnitude of the development proposed on this site is far too large considering the wetlands, the flood plains and the Clove Creek, which has a massive drainage area to the south of a I eighty-four. And this parcel is located at the downstream end of Clove Creek, which is very close to where it enters Fishkill Creek. I believe that there could be a significant impact to the upstream watershed. And I just think the development being proposed here is far too great considering the resources that are here. This, this change doesn't really change my stance from the previous meeting. I, I just, the magnitude of the development's too much for me.
About others, other board members? Well, I'll, I'll give, I'll throw my words in at this point. I tend to agree with Anthony. You know, I was looking forward to seeing what. You know, I was looking forward to seeing what the new configuration could look like, but I think what we're getting is really some relatively small benefits to the wetland buffer area and quite a substantial increase in the square footage of the building, which I, you know, I mean, that's kind of a given when you increase the height of a building with only a slight reduction in the footprint, you're gonna end up with more building. And so I'm, I'm not really too happy with the way that worked out. I think there are ways that the building could go back to a four-story building, which would probably be a lot more in character with the, the surrounding area. I think we discussed before that there really are no five-story buildings in, in the office park. And a four, even most of them aren't four stories, but four stories certainly is allowed and would probably be able to be blended in with the area better. But, um, you know, I just, I don't quite buy the idea that a substantial increase in square footage is what's gonna result from having some minor improvements regarding the buffer area. I think there are other ways, other site techniques for bringing that encroachment down. The reduction in parking spaces, I appreciate very much. And I think, you know, probably ten spaces versus seventeen is about right. But, you know, if that works for the applicant, I think that is probably a good compromise. And I think the board would be happy to work with the applicant on that kind of a waiver for reducing the parking spaces. But I really think there are ways to, you know, and again, I think that's something to, to work on, to see if there are ways of modifying the site plan itself, going back to a four-story building, see whether there are other ways of reducing impacts on the wetland buffer area.
Can we talk that through, the fourth, so, Neale Alexander, Cuddy Fetter?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Let's, let's talk that through a little bit. I mean, 'cause I, I think we always had apprehension about the fourth versus the fifth story, right? I mean, we, we, we said that at the outset. And maybe I'm not fully facile here with everything, but at this point, we had, you know, twelve hundreds of an acre of disturbance to the thirty-foot buffer area. And we took that in half, actually. So we were just playing with math. I understand that. But I think it is important, right? So, but also by not only reducing it in half, what we did actually was we took all of the permanent pervious in buildings out. So what you have left with is grading that's gonna occur in that area and re-vegetating, which we could do with what, you know, wetland mix, we could do with an upland mix. We can work with it from that standpoint, from a storage, we're not losing that area for storage capacity. So, you know, and we're down to six hundreds, if my math is right, that's twenty-six hundred square feet about, that we're talking about. And it's not really around the building, it's around the other side of the building. So, and I'm not trying to push here by any stretch, I'm just sort of trying to say, it wasn't, we didn't have a lot to work with to begin with that we needed to get rid of. We got the building completely out. We got the hardscape, the pavement, the turn, you know, the hammerhead's out too now. If I'm correct, if I'm remembering correct. Yep, okay, just making sure I'm factually accurate, sorry. So what we have is we have some grading that's in and around the stormwater basin primarily. So it's the B M P that we're putting in to handle quality and quantity for our SWIP and acceleration rate. So the measure we're putting in to make water quality better and to reduce acceleration is what the disturbance is to the thirty-foot area. The best management practice itself, the solution to providing better stormwater quality, quantity, and velocity control is the disturbance. It's kind of like complaining about the discharge to the tributary of the water treatment plant that has to go into the stream or the intermittent stream is a way of looking at it. I'm not saying you have to look at it that way, but I think that's really an important point, right? So if, if I'm doing a big residential subdivision that's gonna have a packaging plant and I'm treating all the wastewater, well, the wastewater has to go to a receiving, receiving stream. Therefore, I have to have wetland bu- buffer disturbance and I have to have disturbance to the wetland and the stream bank and the stream, because that's how D E C has you do the design. I don't have to have my stormwater as a matter of course, like that obviously is an engineering solution that has to occur, 'cause the water has to reach. I mean, I guess you could, hyper-technically in the stormwater and in wastewater treatment, have overflow of the tertiary treated water before it hits the stream, but that's not how D E C wants it. Here, same idea, our stormwater practice, the basin that actually is going to control and, and protect the water course you're worried about is what we're disturbing within thirty feet. And I think that's a really important, it's not the building, it's not the building's grading, correct? Primarily.
There is the building grading.
Okay, there's a little bit, okay.
Yes.
But it's primarily, and we're, we're down to twenty-six hundred feet. And trust me, we didn't wanna, we wanted to get to zero. This was not, this was, we knew the exercise was to get to zero. But we need eighty-one feet across of the building for the polarity of the building in order to get the interior elements, which I, I, it's late and I don't wanna get into that level of mire with you all, but our word's pretty good. Eighty-one feet is how we get the loading to get the business plan to work.
And we spent a lot of time on that.
Right. So we took the notch out in order to have basically a ten-foot by, it's ten-foot deep, to get the building out, to have some different kind of units in that area. And, and that, and I'm, and I'm saying it not to, to, I'm trying to help you understand what, that this was an earnest exercise. We didn't just throw a story on top of the building and say, and, you know, and then we tried to tilt and twist, but once you start twisting the corner, then you start pushing the hammerhead in. And that's, that's wherein the challenge comes. And, and I'm not saying we got it perfect, but I am explaining sort of where we came from and why we settled on the stormwater practice being the area where it was sort of okay. Because, you go ahead, you, you.
I just also want to remind those that maybe are not as familiar with the site is that it's not a pristine site. This is part of the Westage development that, you know, start, that came about in the late eighties. And the wetland on site is very much the product of stockpiles that were left, berms that were put in place allowing water to collect over time unnaturally. Now, the area was wet evidently, it's fully located within the floodplain. The water course was completely man-made. I, you, I sent you guys the SHIPO submittal which showed aerial photography, you know, from the fifties onward. I mean, the, the water course that we are protecting on this site was not like this. It's completely man-made. So I'm not trying to diminish the importance of that, but I do, do just wanna point out that this isn't a, you know, beautiful, beautiful preserve that we're, you know, throwing a self-storage facility on. This is a, a proposed, a lot that was proposed as part of a massive development plan that is, that was approved for subdivision and, and most recently in two thousand and eight with a conceptual hotel on top of it. So at any rate, we did spend quite a bit of time trying to make what we thought was gonna be an acceptable concept, but, uh, you know, we are obviously very open to your suggestions to get something that will work.
I, I took the opportunity, I'm, I'm new to this process, but this one, because of its proximity to the wetlands, really interested me. So I took the opportunity yesterday to just walk the entire site, take a look at where you were planning the building based on the preliminary documentation. And I gotta be honest with you, I saw the creek, I saw the disturbances in the land, and for the life of me, I don't understand how you can get a building in there and not disturb the wetlands.
I mean, this was all.
And this is looking at it from an engineering point of view, 'cause that's my background, right?
But this was also completely vetted back when this board approved the subdivision split of this lot into six and six A.
I understand.
And, and so it was determined that, that this was a developable, buildable lot, which had value. And, you know, there's a lot of F A R that's still available in this P S C for, for the Westage Center as a whole and that it's sitting with, with, you know, primarily with here.
So my question would be, since that was deemed to be a developable, buildable lot, how much of the disturbance to the up, that created by the other lots has now created wetlands that weren't there before or that may mitigate that previous decision?
So I, I think there's a different way of looking at it. You have a lot that is, you have a use that's in front of you that's permitted by the code. You have a use that's very low traffic generator, a very low water user, very low wastewater generator. And the building needs to be a certain size. I think, you know, I was just talking with Bobby, whether it's four stories or five stories, that's not the material issue. You know, when we, we, within the smidge of what we're talking about of trying to get smaller footprint, we can handle it as four stories and still meet tolerances for our building plan. The fifth story was actually, I mean, I think we had a conversation about it. It cut both ways for us, because it made the build, it makes the building bigger, which then meets a market, but there's extra costs with it. So we came in originally with four stories. So the four-story concept is something we're com- comfortable with. We're comfortable with the funkiness of that notch from the standpoint of what it does to our interior floor plans, 'cause we get enough of the building at eighty-one feet in width, I mean, in length across. It's just, losing much more of that starts to become a problem. And yes, it is a tight site. That's why we dropped the parking. You know, we came in with a lot of parking, we didn't know how you'd feel about it. You were very favorable to us dropping down. I just, you know, I'm not really sure how much more shake we have, the ability to shake out here, candidly. And I, I, and I think we're, we're talking about twenty-six hundred square feet. I mean, we can continue to work with you on seeing if there's, you know, a little bit of nipping here and there, and maybe that, you know, I mean, literally, you know, we can maybe get a little more of that corner of the notch back and lose a couple more units and do something like that. And we're, I mean, if, if, you know, we're willing to cut a couple more units, but it, it's not, I don't think we're gonna get to, 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 to zero at ten feet wide in twenty-six hundred square feet that we're talking about.
No, I think, no, I, I appreciate the, the balances that you guys are, are having to go through. But I think from the town's viewpoint, we have to go through our own balances and hopefully see if we can come together somewhere with an equation. But I, I don't think we're there yet and I, I really do think we need to go away from the taller building back.
And I don't think, you're not hearing a fight from us on that, we're not, but.
So it's a question of figuring out, figuring out how the footprint can be adjusted, like you're saying, you know, tweaked and, um, it's, it's just that the, the added square footage in the building with the higher building, to me, just didn't make sense.
There's no fight there. I mean, we weren't going to fi- we weren't the one who suggested five to begin with and, and, and I get it with our last meeting. I mean, I think a couple of different things, just to pivot off of the intensity of, of this part of the conversation. So last month, you guys agreed to circulate notice of intent for lead agency. That hasn't been sent out yet.
Right.
And I know that our architecture, and clearly with this conversation, we're not ready to give you architecture and signage yet. But we, I, I, I don't wanna get, have another month and then go circulate then and then have to wait the thirty days. And then you're gonna look at me cross-eyed when I say, but let's schedule a public hearing and you're saying, and you all are saying you're not lead agency yet. So, you know, let, it's important to remember, two thirty, the county wrote back on two thirty-nine L and M review that it was an incomplete application. That's two thirty-nine. That's a whole different, that's intermunicipal review. And that's, that really usually relates to a public hearing. Seeker, when you have a coordinated review, right, you're supposed to, as early in the process as possible, let the other potential agencies know that you wanna be the lead agency. So I, I do think that needs to go out, like now, as is. The Z B A, I mean, put it this way, let me flip it around. And I totally mean this in a jocular sense, 'cause it's eleven, it's five after eleven. You wouldn't want me to walk out of here tomorrow and go apply to the Z B A for a rear yard variance and, and, and assign variance and ask them to be lead agency. You wanna be the lead agency, so let's get the circulation out, right?
And we would also protest it to D E C.
But you know what, well, and that's your job.
To be humorous, that's not humorous, that's, that's serious talk.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go apply that way, but the point I'm saying is you wanna be lead agency.
We're not going back that route.
Let's give the courtesy of the other agencies to know that you wanna be the lead agency. Let's tell them by circulating notice.
And we can, we can do that, once we get the materials that the planning office needs.
I think they have everything except for the architectural and, sorry?
I sent the list out then, what we needed.
But you had, no, but architecturals were on that in elevation.
I didn't send out anything to do with architecturals. I need, I need full, complete sets of site plans. I met with the chairman on Monday and we did that list together.
Okay, I, I, what I'm asking is you don't need that site plan. You can use the site plan that you had already, which is four, which was the four stories. Because you're trying to let the other agents, I mean, crying out loud, D E C, SHIPO, and D O T have already signed off on the project, let alone whether they wanna be lead agency. I mean, we started this with the pre-application in August. I'm just asking for you to let everybody know you're the lead agency. I mean, think about the peril I'm at, that what if the Z B A decided they wanted to be? Like, there was a cell tower case where they were.
Yeah, and look what happened with that.
It's, thank God we didn't wind up in federal court. Then it looks pretty good.
No, it doesn't.
Let's not go there right now.
The point of the matter is.
If you wanna get out of here before January.
No, but the point of the matter is, it really is, if you look at the seeker regs, look at the seeker handbook, look at the cookbook, you're supposed to let, if you're doing a coordinated review, you're supposed to let the other agencies know as early in the process as possible. You passed a resolution six zero, you have all the material you need. What's happening is two thirty-nine and seeker lead agency notice are being conflated, and they're two different things.
So let me see if I can move this forward. Dominic, what in your mind is the minimum that Debbie would need to send out the lead agency notice of intent? A correct, certainly a corrected E A F form.
Correct. And a site plan package, so that all the other agencies can see the details of what's being proposed. So the most up-to-date site plan package, provided, however, the board should give perhaps some feedback as to whether modified plan is the one that they would indicate should be circulated for lead agency or if it was the previous plan that was submitted, because the board may wanna treat this as an alternative, which may or may not address the board's concerns. But it's a notice, it's the E A F, and it's the plan set.
So in your mind, it would be all right to circulate the originally submitted site plan, knowing that that may change, well, most likely will change further?
Yes.
But certainly would be better than circulating the five-story version that isn't going anywhere.
Yeah, I, I, you know, the, but the board can continue to look at this or variations of this. You know, seeker is, in my mind, seeker is an iterative process, so the plans do change over time. It does, what gets circulated at lead agency is often not the type, the, the plans that get approved at the end of the process. But, you know, I think the original plan set would put everyone else on notice that this is being proposed for a self-storage facility and it requires site plan approval. And there are associated other impacts associated with, with this proposal. I said associated too many times, but it is getting late.
I think we got the message.
It's late. And that's, and we know that for two thirty-nine, it has to be a complete application. And that's, that'll have to occur back when we're closer to a public hearing and we have a design that satisfies you. a design that satisfies you. But at least let's, while this next 30 days go by, that between when we're going to be iterative, let's at least make you lead agent, you know, in a position where when we come back next month, you can declare yourself lead agency.
Yeah. We were close to being able to get the lead agency notice out, but we just want to make sure that the planning office is comfortable with what they have. And I think having the discussion tonight probably helps us do that.
It does, only then, other than I'm going to need the requested copies of those previous site plans because they are not available to me. Well, I have what was initially brought in, so now we have to make one again.
So how many copies?
Exactly what I said in the memo, but I need you to revise, that's all I need to do.
Of the ones from like October as opposed to the ones from December?
Yeah.
That's, that's fine. That's, I mean, and we can try and see if we can do a little bit more and we'll take a look at the business plan as to, but like I said, the issue is that depth of 81 feet is how you get that preferred, you know, mix of units in order to be successful, right? I mean, at the end of the, at the end of the day, it's not just a building, it's a business plan too. So we can look at that a little bit. Kyle's going to hate me. He's already gone through a couple bottles of Excedrin trying to figure that out, but we can take a look at that. We're committed to looking at that. And I think, you know, it is important though, and I know I'm belaboring it, but we're, we're going to try and do better, but we're down to 2,600 feet and it's all grading. It's not permanent disturbance. So I think that's really important to distinguish too, which means that since if it's grading and it's pervious, it still provides storage capacity, if you think about it, in a flood event.
So just keep in mind, you've already heard from a couple of other members that there is, let's say, discomfort with the size of the building squeezing into this site. So it's, it's a real thing that needs to be, to be considered.
No, and we saw the neck deck, you know, you granted earlier this evening, you know, across 84 and we're aware of that design as well. So we're trying to balance, you know, our business plan with your prior determinations and the history of this lot. You know, a lot of questions of had things been properly managed a long time ago, whether that wetland even would have existed, which would have given us more room in front, you know, instead of having to be stuck a little bit here in the back corner. But I guess that's by guns.
But with all due respect, that's what we're trying to prevent now.
No, no, that was a function of.
We don't want the problem to keep continuing.
That was a construction, but that wasn't, no. The wetland in front was caused by construction in the 80s. It's not.
And so we don't want to keep perpetuating.
But you're not perpetuating it. We're talking about a construction project.
Okay.
Yeah, they're totally.
All right, all right. We don't need an argument here.
Understood. But they're totally different issues. One is a construction issue, an enforcement issue that goes back a long time ago, and another is a design issue today. They're different.
And we can only work with what we have today, so let's do that.
And we're going to, like I said, you know, you haven't had any fight from us on trying to do better. We're trying. We're just, well, all we've tried to explain is the constraints on the site.
And we appreciate it.
All right.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
So we will work with you on getting the lead agency notice out and then we look forward to seeing, you know, what further modifications you can come up with.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Wow. So we are late and we have, we do have another item. Is the applicant for that still here?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
We're always last.
I didn't even see you there. How are you?
I brought a book tonight because Continental Collins has always been last. Good evening, members of the planning board, Mr. Cantor, I'm Stuart Messinger with LaBella Associates, Mr. Kodesko, Mr. Bowdenorth, Mr. Colonna, nice to see you all again. Just background here, we received preliminary approval from the board a couple of years ago. We were stopped because we had an issue with the town board refusing to give us water and sewer. We filed suit, we won that suit. The court directed the town board to give us approval for water and sewer extensions. That has now happened. So we're in front of you to perfect the final conditions of approval. And in particular, the final conditions of approval had eight covenants or restrictions that we've submitted to you for this meeting, and I'll just review those in a second, but I also want to bring up to speed on two other agency approvals. One is approval from the DOT. We have that, should be in the record. If it's not, we can refresh the record. The other is approval from the DOH. We've applied to the DOH. We had gone back and forth with them a few times and then paused while the water and sewer was worked out with the town. So we've made what we hope to be our final submission to them and we're just waiting to hear back. So we're pretty darn close. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is we have the same request as two applicants ago, is that we would like to have permission to clear the trees for phase one prior to the March 31st deadline. And we wouldn't have to do a resolution on that tonight, but assuming that we're going to be back to talk about the covenants and restrictions, we'd ask for that to happen as well. So with respect to the covenants and agreements and so on, there's seven of them that we've submitted to you. There's an eighth which we think is handled not by an agreement, but by simply a plan change, which is to move the location of a no trucks, no trucks allowed on the Van Wick Road entrance. So our quest for you tonight is to refer those, I assume you haven't referred them yet to council or to engineer. If, I think it might make sense for us to be granted permission to talk to them directly would be kind of quicker and more efficient. And then again, consider a resolution at the next meeting that will allow us to go ahead and do the tree clearing prior to March 31st because I suspect we're still a few months off from having health department and everything else.
Okay. Well, Dominic and also John, you are going to be reviewing and providing feedback on the easements and agreements and everything. We didn't certainly expect that that would happen tonight, but.
Well, Evan might add that it is helpful for, for those documents to be submitted. We're particularly hamstrung in two respects, if I may. You know, one is, you know, we came into this project representing the town last year and the approvals obviously predate us, but that isn't, you know, an insurmountable hurdle. It's just places us a little bit of disadvantage. And in addition to that, the most, the more information that you can provide, Mr. Messenger, to us in connection with these would be helpful because unfortunately, and correct me if I'm wrong, Debbie, but we have never received a file back from Kyle Barnett.
No, but I did, I did share with you a Dropbox link.
You did.
That's all I have.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So actually, as part of the litigation, file went to the litigators.
Oh, I see.
So I don't have any originals.
And so, so our information is a little bit limited. So the more, you came in with a book, but the more that you can provide, it can actually help facilitate our review. All that said, there are some documents that were submitted that are properly before the planning board for their review to make sure that they capture the intent of those requirements in the beginning, that would part of the approval rather. But then there are others that are conditions of the approval, but actually involve the town board. And so for instance, the stormwater facilities maintenance agreement is a document that gets reviewed by the town board, approved by the town board and then has to be filed, recorded rather, and proof of recording is provided, but it's not something that in my mind or traditionally this board has been involved in the review of because it relates to stormwater management, stormwater enforcement, which becomes a town issue, a town board issue. So what I would suggest that we do is that I should forward on documents that would have town board review to Steve and Gava, who represents the town board, my partner, and provide him with background information as to that so he can begin his review for that. And then to the other documents, perhaps the board could place this on the agenda for the February meeting so that we can talk about that, those particular documents, maybe in a, you know, not so late, but also talk about the request and what could be done for the authorization to remove trees as appropriate at that time. You know, I think that it might be helpful to focus the board with making a submission in connection with the tree removal. I don't believe it was part of your latest submission, that request.
It is not. No, so we'll do that.
And so, and I would even dare say to suggest that perhaps a plan that even highlights the areas where the trees are being proposed to be removed.
It'll be called terminus with phase one. I know you're new in this, but I'm happy to do that. It's just a phase one plan and those are the trees that go. There's a very extensive landscaping plan and one of your conditions has to do with the use of native species, which, which we've met in our landscaping plan. But maybe we submit those two together to kind of refresh the board.
Just, just something that can be, you know, if the board is inclined to grant that, they can reference a particular plan.
Sure.
You know, to authorize that tree removal, but not beyond that.
Okay.
And I apologize, I have not had an opportunity to review the plans, so.
Understood.
There actually, I think, is one more thing that you might want to do at the February meeting. I don't think this has been done yet, but, so I looked back at the freshwater wetlands water course water body permit, was signed by the planning board chair and myself on March 20th, 2020. And that permit was valid for three years. So that's coming up, March 20th, 2023. And so either at the February or March planning board meeting, you probably want to put in a written request for extending that.
We'll do that. That's, thank you for telling us that.
That can be extended by two additional periods of 90 days each. So come in with, you know, that first request for 90 days extension. You might as well do it at the February meeting if you're going to come in, try to get in for that anyway.
Absolutely. Okay.
One other condition that I noticed in the resolution of preliminary approval was that mechanical soil stripping investigation plan and unanticipated discovery plan. I know we had seen.
You have those.
Drafts of that before, but it's worded in a form acceptable to the planning board and the opposite historic preservation. So, I mean, that can be probably carried over as a condition of final approval, I would think, especially since there's that outside agency involved.
My recollection is that they have already approved them.
Okay.
But, but I'll confirm that in one way or the other.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good. It's been so long since we've actually seen any follow-ups on that.
Yeah, I'm fairly certain that those were approved, but we'll figure it out.
Okay. And then it sounds like the planning board's authorization for our planning board attorney to communicate, well, probably, probably from an engineering viewpoint, you probably also want maybe some communication and feedback, John, from.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because I'm in the same boat. You know, this entire project predates my being.
And just to offer, if either of you or both of you together want us to just sit down and do a page turn, happy to do it.
I would be in favor of that. I don't know if Dominic wants, you know, wants to, but.
Why don't we look for a time to do that between now and the Feb. meeting?
So why don't we have a motion from the planning board to authorize our attorney and engineer to communicate directly with the applicant's team to follow up on the documents that have been submitted and any other details that they need to flesh out.
Some would.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll see you in February. Remind me the next submission date?
Hopefully, January 25th.
Got it. Okay.
All right. Well, thanks for staying up so late.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, no problem.
Good seeing you again. Didn't even recognize you. It's been so long.
Well, I got gray.
You're not the only one.
Didn't we all?
It is late, but I have one item of other business that I think we really should do tonight, and that is appointment of a planning board vice chair. And actually, if, if our attorney and engineer need to get going, I would completely understand. But if you want to hang around too, that's fine too. But so we normally appoint, well, this is kind of new because we've only done it within the last couple of years since our recent rules and regulations authorized the planning board to appoint our own vice chair. So Anthony has been serving in that capacity for about, what, the last year and a half or so?
Feels longer.
Yeah. I know. I know.
It feels like it was last summer.
Well, yeah, it was, it's sort of been on and off, but yeah.
But do we need to do it every time?
Well, we should be doing it annually, but we only adopted the rules and regulations not too long ago. So, but at any rate, what I'll do is I'll ask for a nomination for the vice chair position. And we'll get a second on that and vote on the nomination. And then I'll ask if there are any other nominations from members. And if not, we'll vote on the one. And if there are more than one, then we'll figure that out as we go along.
I'll nominate Anthony.
Thank you, Ron. Much for that second. I just want to state also that I think Anthony's done a great job in filling in. You know, it's not an easy job, as we know, and I think he's done a great job and I'm very happy to be able to second the nomination.
And the only reason we're doing that is because we sit next to him.
And you're not going to let him get away.
No.
All right. Well, so we have a motion, well, a nomination and a second on that nomination. So that would be for Anthony to continue. All in favor of Anthony as the nominee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Do their vote, no.
I'll abstain.
One abstention.
You know, if you abstain, you could lose the vote.
One abstention. All right. So.
Case in our favor.
So that was the nomination. Now we're actually going to see if there are any other nominations from members.
There are no other nominations that I see, Mr. Chairman. I think we can move forward.
Let's move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to appoint Anthony Brozier as vice chairperson of the town official planning board through December 31, 2023?
I would like to do that.
Felix is moving it and Fred is seconding it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention. Okay. That's it.
All right. Yeah, I would think he's.
Congratulations, Anthony, I think.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one more motion.
Yes.
Let's leave.
All right. We don't need a second. We just need to leave.
Yes.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. This was one of those tough ones.